Good morning. It is nine o'clock, the appointed hour. We have a quorum present, and therefore we are going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This meeting will be conducted. These meetings will be conducted in compliance with Nebraska's Open Meeting laws, a copy of which is on the back wall. If you'd be so kind, I'd appreciate it if you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And actually, the first meeting this morning is the Douglas County Health Center Board of Trustees meeting, which is chaired by Trustee Mary Ann Borgerson, and so I will turn the floor over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we'll begin with the roll call.
Good morning. Trustee Boyle, Trustee Kavanaugh, Trustee Duda. Trustee Kraft is present via Zoom but cannot participate. Trustee Morgan, Trustee Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. We do have a consent agenda, items A through E. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call. And does that include adjournment? Roll call.
Okay. Trustee Boyle, Trustee Kavanaugh, Trustee Duda, Trustee Morgan, Trustee Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero, and we are adjourned.
Quite a quick meeting. I should have you on all of our meetings, Mary Ann. Next, we will convene as the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Mr. Clerk, could we please have the roll call for that?
Commissioner Borgerson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Kraft is present via Zoom but cannot vote, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Present. Thank you. Item A, approval of the minutes from September 22nd. Item B is calling for a meeting on Tuesday, October 14th is the date for hearing on certified assessment corrections. What is the will of the board? I have a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Borgerson to approve items A and B. Are there any questions or comments to either of these items? If not, I would ask for the vote, please.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Citizens' comments. Would anybody like to address this board on anything not on the agenda? This is the opportunity to do so. If not, we will move to, well, we'd probably start, better start with just Resolution D, because I think we have somebody here on E. So would...
We, Mr. Chair, if I may, unless there's other people here to speak on, well, I apologize. I thought we had it set up to take care of what you were trying to do, so never mind, whatever you're...
All right. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution D. Thank you. I will second that. Questions or comments? Approving government-owned properties. Could we please vote on item D?
One moment, please.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And while you're voting, would you mind repeating who made the motion at second on that?
Commissioner Rogers moved, and I seconded.
Thank you. And Commissioner Morgan. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Next, we have Resolution E, which is actually a protest item, but I don't think that should much matter. Protest of special valuation, green belt disqualification for the Hannis family at 13808 North 324th Street in Valley. This would be the opportunity for Mr. Hannis or anybody to say your piece. Is anybody present?
Sir, are we taking up Resolution E right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because that's not what the agenda said up there on the wall. I am Michael Hannis. I'm the property owner, taxpayer, located at 13808 North 324th Street in Douglas County, Nebraska. And I have applied for agricultural, horticultural land classification with the green belt. And I have submitted my reasoning to you, some things that I have in support. Their problem that exists is that it takes three years to be able to go to the Turk. And what has happened is, the last three years have been a up and down and inconsistent sort of dealing with this property by the Board of Equalization. But I state myself, I feel pretty clearly in writing. I operate daily throughout the year, a commercial, agricultural, horticultural practice on the land, and it's for commercial purposes. And that's what has got to be done to meet the statute. Now, I presented this very clearly to the assessor this year once again, as in prior years, and I received a naked, "You don't qualify" without any reasoning logic. And as I stand here today, I still have none. So what I'm asking you to do, rather than my using my time to go through the presentation, is if you haven't considered what has been filed with Dan Ash, the clerk, please do that now. Not only are there items grown in the way of vegetation, vegetables, woody florals, nuts and berries, sold at market for commercial purposes, there's also livestock. Livestock produce meat. Goats produce milk that people can drink. It's a better milk than, in my opinion, than you'll find coming from a cow. And naturally, you can't milk a goat when you feel like doing it. You have to do it every day, day in and day out. Therefore, that's what's going on on the property. In order to grow the products and be legal with the state of Nebraska, we have a nursery stock distributor license. This is for the perennials that are grown on the property and sold. And we can't sell produce responsibly without having a part in the safety program. And so you'll see that qualification on another exhibit. You'll see the actual sum of the dairy goats and the milking stand that they're milked on in another exhibit. And naturally, this dairy goat is a doe because she's got bags and she's one of the milk producers. We've got a pig. In particular, this one here, we've got pigs, plural, but this one here in the picture is a boar that you would not want to step on the property alone when he's running loose, because he's very territorial. We participate in Nebraska's farm markets, and you could find us in a vendor search. I maintain a commercial pesticide applicator license, which we can see is going to expire in '22. Exhibit 10 tells, just has pictures. We've done this for years. Nothing's changing. I've come to you now since 2015, 2016, '17, '18, '19. This is 2020. Some of you have sampled the eggs that the chickens produce. Some of you have sampled the meat that the pork, the sheep, and the goats produce. We grow woody florals. We have chicken eggs. I can't forget the beekeeping, because we have honey. Bees are a very challenging thing to deal with today because of so many circumstances that happen in our environment. And so that also is a daily pressure that I have to keep up with. The commodities farm summary, it's not everything that goes on the 20 acres of property. It's only what the FSA recognizes. And most of that is the vegetables. If there's any questions, I'd sure like to be able to respond to them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for being here today. One of the things I didn't hear you say, which, again, you have gone through the process that is placed before a citizen to go through, and that is to come to the Board of Equalization and then on to the Tax Equalization Review Commission at the state level. We got word that the, also known as Turk, but we did get word that the Turk granted you the green belt for three of the years, '17, '18, and '19. And, no, whatever the three years, the three years were, Turk granted you those, and now we're back here again at our level. I'm a little bit conflicted, because I'm not real sure of all of the things that you do on the property or don't do on the property really qualify for green belt. But at the same time, we've not only had our office, assessor's office, review it, you have gone a number of years to Turk, and they've reviewed it, and they have come back. And I think it's just time that we grant you the green belt, because you've done your due diligence as a citizen with the processes that we have in place. And so... I don't know, today, is it just presentation, Mr. Chair, just says protest of special valuation, green belt disqualification, but Teresa, I would guess I would ask, can I make a motion to grant Mr. Hannis the green belt?
I would think that would be acceptable, but I'm not the attorney. Mr. Goodwilly, do you have an opinion on...
Or is this just presentation today?
Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. I think you need to vote today.
Aye.
I'd like to be heard if Mr. Hannis, if, I think Mr. Hannis was still up, and you folks were still asking him questions. I don't want to impinge on his time.
No, I wasn't really asking him questions. I just wanted to make sure people knew that the Turk had ruled on the previous years that he had been before them, and now we're back here again. So you can go ahead, if, Mr. Chair, if you are okay with that.
If I might, please.
Mr. Goodwilly, what do you have to share with us?
Just that we think that the Turk decided that case wrongly. The appeal has been filed, and so we're not conceding that at all. What I would like you to think about, as I was sitting there listening to Mr. Hannis' presentation, is almost all of it is based completely on his say-so. And the reason I say that is, although we have, for example, he says they raise livestock, they raise, they've had pigs, chickens, goats. We've had staffers go out there multiple times over the most recent years. We've not seen livestock, chickens, hogs, or goats. We can see most of the property from the lane, or from the road. The Hannises have declined to let us actually walk the full extent of the property. But nonetheless, we've never seen any of that livestock. And what's more, if you look at the overhead of the property that I think we've provided, there doesn't seem to be a chicken house or a place where you'd process milk or honey or any of that. And what's more, nothing around that property seems to be fenced. Now, you know, I'm not sure, I don't know how you train a goat or a pig or some livestock not to go wandering off. But nonetheless, there seems to be sort of inherent, an inherent credibility problem between what Mr. Hannis is representing to you and what you can empirically verify with respect to some of the other issues. The nursery stock license is for one acre. The test is, are the acres not associated with improvements used primarily for agricultural purposes? There's 19 of those. So even if you conceded that that one acre was not associated with the home site or other structures on the property, one isn't 19. The FSA report, that's all self-reported. The FSA doesn't verify that. So you're free to write down whatever you want for whatever acres you want. You know, Mr. Hannis has indicated in his documentation that they sell their agricultural stuff to vendors. At no time have we ever been supplied a vendor's name, where we could reach out and verify and say, gee, do you buy honey, or do you buy eggs, or what is it that you buy from, from Mr. Hannis? It's all pretty much his say-so. And I guess my suggestion to you, Commissioner Borgerson, is if you believe Mr. Hannis, by all means, you know, grant him his green belt application. But we just see too much that isn't really corroborated by anything. And I would add one more item, and this is by way of credibility and who you need to believe today, is that Mr. Hannis has been denied permission to take the bar exam in two different states because of a lack of honesty and a lack of character. So I guess I would take whatever he tells you with a grain of salt, a large grain of salt.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwilly. Commissioner Borgerson, the floor is still, Mike?
Yes, certainly. Is that okay? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
Yeah.
Are you still talking?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask briefly, I mean, if you look at all these licenses and things like this, like the NDA Stock Distributor Grower's License, FSA Farm Producer Report, all these commercial agricultural pesticide applicator licenses, all this sort of thing, could I get that? I live over the Brandeis Building.
Yes.
Can I get that? Could I get those?
Yes.
Really?
Yes. Take a class. You have to take a four-hour class. Come certified pesticide applicator.
I got enough to do about that. Are you serious? Could I get all those licenses?
At least the certified pesticide applicator, absolutely. I mean, I've had that for many years.
It just, it seems like all this sort of adds up into, you know, my reading this, and it just adds up that this should be granted. That's why I'm puzzled by all this.
Well, look, I think there's a little, I'm not going to argue. I think there's a little bit of activity here. I don't think it's the predominant use of 19 acres.
Okay, thanks.
And when I hear things about goats and livestock, my ears perk up. As the owner of, my cup says I'm two goats past normal, but it's closer to 200 goats past normal. The first book I ever read on keeping goats said, "If you can blow smoke through a fence, a goat can get through it." And that seems to be the case. And so I'm curious why I don't see any fencing on your project, when you say, you have goats, sheep, pigs, where's the fencing? There's no barns. There's, I don't see anything to accommodate livestock in here.
What we're doing is, we're getting carried away with where we've been the last four, five, six years, and that is the smoke that Mr. Goodwilly blows our way. The assessor has been free to come out and inspect the property. We've shown the assessor the place where the chickens are. You can see where the goats are. I don't know what pictures Mr. Goodwilly's pointing out to, because I have received none. Therefore, without evidence being presented to me, that evidence should not even be considered. I don't know what you're seeing. And you, I have lived on this property for over 30 years, and I have kept sheep, I've kept cows, I have kept pigs, I have kept goats. I'm very sorry. If you can't contain your goats on your property, then you need to look at your goat closer.
Thank you. I did not say I cannot contain my goats. Thank you for the...
And we cannot file an FSA report.
If a person were to go out to your farm today, how many goats would they find on the premises? How many cattle? How many pigs? How many sheep?
Between goats and pigs, at least a dozen.
Would be there right?
But you would have to look all over the property, including the woods, because everything is pasture. We have bee pollinator habitat. I disagree with Mr. Goodwilly's class statement about the FSA, because the representative came out this year, because we're looking at the pollinator habitat, the quality of the present one, and adding on more habitat. So because the thing isn't finalized, you're not going to see the document this year, because it's something we're working through, but you're going to see it next year. There's more bee pollinator habitat that's going to be out there. You know what? Bee pollinator habitat goes with the bees. It doesn't go with the goats. It doesn't go with the pigs. It doesn't go with the sheep. It doesn't go with the cows. It's specifically bee pollinator habitat, and that is pasture for bees. It's not unusual to find chickens on pasture. Maybe you're not used to it if you're a commercial chicken producer. If you come out and you look at the Costco plant and inspect it, I guarantee you, there's no pasture there. But they produce their chickens in cages commercially. We don't. We keep things organic. We keep things natural. You're not going to find pesticides and herbicides on our property. So it's a safe haven. Unless it oversprays, then I've got a problem. I've got a neighbor who has...
You're a certified pesticide applicator if you don't use pesticides. That's curious. Commissioner Borgerson?
I guess for me, I just go back to the same, I mean, this could go into perpetuity, back and forth, back and forth. And again, my issue with this is, for the last four years, we have had Mr. Hannis here, he has gone to Turk, he's back again, and Turk has now come up with their ruling on the last three years. And again, you know, I guess everybody has their opinion. That's the whole deal with values and what have you. But I just think that because he's gone through this process numerous times, and it's finally been ruled at the state level, that we just, here at the local level, grant him the green belt and move on.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Have a second, please. You sent us a opinion on September 24th, which is part of the record here.
Right.
And I note that it says in paragraph three, "The board dealt with this issue last year and denied. Subsequent to that, the Tax Equalization Review Commission issued an opinion on August 27, 2020, granting the property special valuation status for tax years 2017, 2018, and 2019."
Yes.
Basically siding with Mr. Hannis for these past years that he has spent appealing the rulings...
They did.
...we made. And now you're saying, that aside, we think that was wrongly decided, and we should go back and put him through the wringer again. You know, it seems to me that when a taxpayer comes to us, having exhausted all of his appellate rights, spending time and money and everything else, and prevailed upon review, that you're perfectly legally entitled not to agree with that, in this case Turk, but a higher court's opinion. But I mean, they apparently don't agree with you.
They don't, that's why...
I'm sorry. They have the authority to make the final decision in this case. So why in the world are we continuing to come back kind of a sour as grapes, and despite the fact that the appellate review goes against us again and again and again, and put this taxpayer through the wringer yet again? Why are we doing this?
Well, because we think that case was wrongly decided. We've appealed it.
I understand that.
We've appealed it, and here's Mike...
I'm not done. I think a lot of cases are wrongly decided, but when the appeal is done, it's done. And, you know, this gentleman's been before us again and again and again and again, and he's prevailed. And now you want to put him through the wringer again? I just think, you know, we've got bigger fish to fry and let the appellate decisions, which are for three past tax years, and presumably he will appeal again, and I bet Turk will give a consistent opinion there for this tax year, let's just, you know, agree to disagree and move on here, because it appears that Turk doesn't agree with you over and over and over again on this particular case. Is that right?
I tried to answer, I tried to respond, and then you said you weren't finished.
No, I just asked a question that you can respond to, yes or no. Is that right?
Mr. Goodwilly keeps getting interrupted when he tries to respond.
Just give me a straight answer.
The answer is, the Turk ruled in Mr. Hannis' favor. They did. We think that case was wrongly decided. And, and I guess our point of view is, because this tribunal, or the Turk tribunal was, was, I believe, Mr. Hannis, doesn't mean that case was accurately decided. There's still an appeal remedy. And I guess from our standpoint, should the grift be rewarded just because it's persistent?
I see.
We've had, look, we've had this thought too. But, but I don't know. If you see something that, that, you know, is incorrect, and, and, you know, should you, should you just call it a day because, well, anyway?
No, I understand your position. I don't agree with it. What I see is a taxpayer, a property taxpayer, and a business person who, over and over and over again, prevails in the appellate of this question, and we keep coming back and making him jump through hoops. I think that's improper. I don't think we should subject our property owners, taxpayers, businesspeople to that type of rigorous, I guess you could say, regulation in light of the fact that he's prevailed over and over and over again. So I appreciate your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, I recognize this particular property we have been dealing with for years and years. And yes, I recognize this particular property we have been dealing with for years and years. But that is not enough to convince me, and I'm sorry to say that your livestock is down in the woods somewhere, isn't good enough to convince me that you're in the livestock business without fences or barns. I'm skeptical of everything that is shared with us. I think this is all being done simply to justify getting green belt. I think this guy, this taxpayer is bound and determined, has a mission to get green belt no matter what. And I think the Turk got tired of listening to him, and we are tired of listening to him. I don't know why they gave it to him because this isn't a farm. Maybe one of 20 acres is, and that's it.
May I address this?
Please, although I would ask you to be kind of brief, we need to get this wrapped up.
What we're looking at here is the statute. The issue is, is there agricultural, horticultural practices going on on the, what portion of the property? There's another statute that says you can't mark it off and say only here. I'm telling you that for sure, they're going on all over the property. This representative, Mr. Goodwilly, claims that, oh, he's got all these inspections. But I have not been present for an inspection in over five years. So I don't know when these inspections have occurred. Now, nothing in the statute. The statute then goes on to say, is this for a commercial purpose? And I've represented to you that yes. It's agricultural, horticultural operations on the property for a commercial purpose. There's nothing in the statute. And this is where the tumble occurs. The tumble occurs when we judge the quality. I'm not asking you to judge me as a farmer. I'm not asking you to judge me in my agricultural and horticultural pursuits. I could be the sloppiest agricultural, horticultural pursuer in the county. But I still do it on my property, all over my property. I've done it for over 20 years. And I do it for a commercial purpose. So meets the law. And that's what I'm asking for. Mr. Boyle, you have to understand the law.
Thank you, Mr. Hennes. I believe our attorney might have a comment here. Good morning, Teresa.
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. I simply wanted to reply to Commissioner Borgeson's question earlier. Yes, you may decide this today. It's a protest. So you can either grant the protest and grant the green belt, or deny the protest and let the assessor's recommendation stand. I would like to clarify one thing with regards to the law. It's not just using the land for agricultural, horticultural purposes. It's the primary use. So you're looking at what's the primary use of the land. And so I simply wanted to clarify that. It's not just that you do some sort of agricultural or horticultural all over the property, but what's the primary use of the land?
Yep. Otherwise, every gardener would qualify for green belt. That's true. Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
For Hennes to green belt.
We have a motion in a second to grant the green belt. Further questions or comments? Then I would call for the vote.
Motion passes four to two. Commissioner Rogers and D W O N, other commissioners voting yes.
Okay. Thank you. This brings us to resolutions F and G. We're supposed to have a presentation, but Mr. Bowman is not able to be with us this morning. We have no need for executive session. So I would entertain a motion to approve F, G, and adjourn as a Board of Equalization. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Borgeson. Questions or comments? Could we please vote?
One moment, please. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We will now convene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. And I would ask for the roll call one more time, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner crap is virtual via Zoom but cannot vote, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Present. Thank you. Item one, minutes and claims. A is the approval of the minutes from the September 22 meeting. And B is approval of claims submitted for payment through October 6. We have a motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers to approve. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, I have a question on a payment, I believe, for Deloitte. And I asked the clerk to give us that number. My understanding is that there is a payment. We discussed this at the CARES meeting yesterday for Deloitte. And I'm not really sure what exactly this is for. I requested from Mr. Lorenz, time slips, to support the payment. I got a one-page handwritten response that says, okay to pay $111,666, signed by Joe Lorenz. But it doesn't break out what any of those payments are for. The original contract, which I objected to and voted against, said this was going to be a $300,000 deal. And we're well over a million into this $300,000 deal with no real documentation to the Douglas County Commissioners who are elected and responsible for dispersing these monies. So I would ask that that particular payment be set aside for a separate vote from the other payments that we're going to approve here today.
Okay. And I do have to again remind Commissioner Kavanaugh that we have voted more than once on this. And we did increase, we, the county board, in a public vote, increased the allocation by half a million dollars. So to keep citing a figure that predates that and say, why are we spending so much? Doesn't carry much water. Joe?
Yes. What, the only thing handwritten on that sheet was my approval. This was a invoice, a monthly invoice received by Deloitte, which was the first page. And then the second page is here, which is a detailed itemization of each member of the Deloitte team, how many hours they worked during what week, and how that sums up to the total fee of $111,000. And I looked at this for reasonableness and knowing what most of these individuals specifically do, it looked reasonable to me. And given that the county board has already authorized a payment of $1,185,000 in fees to Deloitte, of which this is just part of, but the conceptual payment has been approved, I approve payment of this bill, just like I approve a lot of invoices that come through our office.
So that bill's already been paid?
It's in process. That's why it's waiting for board approval today. But it's, I've signed off on it and sent it to the clerk's office for processing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lorenz, when I requested the backup documents on this, I got this one-page thing. I've never seen this document before and it's not contained.
I would, I would ask you to go through your emails because I know Karen sent them and I reviewed it. And if you would have printed out the whole thing, it would have been there.
It's not contained in our documents of minutes and claims either. And I guess.
This is what I sent you for your request yesterday. So I do take issue that you say you didn't get it because I know, I checked it, and it did get sent to you, sir.
I appreciate that. I haven't seen that. And apparently this has been sitting on your desk since September 10. And we've had this discussion about, we don't want to get last-minute submissions from you to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now we're over a million bucks to these folks for God knows what, just because you say so. Just because you, Joe Lorenz, like Deloitte.
This has been approved by the county board. This.
I'm not approving this anymore. And if you don't come to us well in advance of an actual board meeting and give us this unsolicited information relative to this now spiraling out of control contract.
It's not spiraling. I disagree, Commissioner. It's not spiraling. It's all under the approval.
The actual taxpayers, Mr. Lorenz, who elect us, not you, to provide them with services.
Let's try to be civil here, please, please. There's no reason for us to go down.
Pointing out that we don't get information is, I think, civil and actually part of our job.
Okay. All right, fine. They just said they sent you that information, but.
Yesterday, at my request in a late email that I didn't get. In any event, I'm motioning that we don't approve this until we get adequate and timely documentation on a weekly basis if we're going to approve these going forward. Because obviously, Deloitte has far exceeded the original contract, again, that I voted against, for $300,000. And we're now paying them way more than we're paying the citizens for utilities relief and other relief programs. We're paying them, and we're paying them first.
Claire.
Are you through, Mr. Kavanaugh?
Claire.
Are you through, Mr. Kavanaugh?
I'm ready to vote. I make a motion not to pay this today.
You won't answer my question either. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I think the record shows I was not very much in favor of this particular oversight by Deloitte. And Mr. Kavanaugh is right about what we're spending on the, on the aid versus the cost of administering it. And so, I mean, those points are valid. But Mr. Lorenz doesn't really need my defense. But I, I do get information and I have seen these figures. And I, while I don't agree with them, I think it's the will of the county board. And one of the things that I have to do on occasion, probably repeatedly, is go with them. You know, understand that there's a majority that supports it. So while I may be in the minority, but I do want to say that I don't have any objection to at all or any criticism of Mr. Lorenz's activity. I do understand sometimes I think what we maybe need to do is look at our process. You know, the city council has a pre-council meeting that may make some sense for us to be doing as well. Maybe we need to get together on Mondays and talk about what's on the agenda on Tuesday. I used to do that in the mayor's office because I was tired of getting bushwhacked by the city council when I went down, you know, because we didn't discuss things beforehand. And so if there's some volatile item or something else, maybe this would give us a chance to look at our procedures. And maybe there's a way to get these answers before it's at a public forum and we're being asked to vote on it. That's all I'd suggest. And I'll bring that up the next time we talk about the rules in January. But I understand the objections. I'm not a fan of it. I wish we were giving more money. Melissa's doing a great job getting this out. There's, to me, there's too many restrictions that I know are required. But having said that, I am going to support this expenditure because I, I think the majority wants it and I don't want to give the wrong signal. While I probably would have my no vote in the minority, I think I need to be true to myself and go ahead and support this. And while I don't really favor it that much, sometimes you have to do those things.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. All right. So it seems like there is a request to pull out one payment from the claim submitted for payment today for separate consideration. Is that accurate? Okay. Do the maker.
I had a motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers.
Okay. Are you, that Commissioner Rogers? Okay. Then I would call for the vote on A and B, less the payment to Deloitte.
No, it's everything minus that. Commissioner Rogers. Okay. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the payment to Deloitte? Moved by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. I think we've probably had adequate discussion. I would go ahead and call for the vote on that.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. This brings us to the consent agenda. Item H and E are both stricken from the agenda. So this would be items A through D, F, and G. Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Questions or comments to the motion? Commissioner Boyle?
I do want to point out the item A is a very important performance grant. And I think Mr. Johnson made an excellent, very good presentation in the document. So I certainly am in favor of that, and I want to make that comment.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Item B. And I think Ms. Havakati's here. This is approve a three-month contract with Kelly Lane Design to provide graphic design services for the juvenile justice reform. I'm not exactly sure what that is, and that's why I'm asking. Good morning.
Good morning. Kim Havakati, Deputy County Administrator.
I have been difficult hearing you.
Oh, sorry. Kim Havakati, Deputy County Administrator. There was a copy of the contract that was included with it. And then under that contract, it is grant-funded through these funds. But it's to create some graphic type of documents so that we can use, both in our community, so we can show in the community what we're doing on our juvenile justice reform, but also how to understand the system for families and youth in the community because we all know what a difficult system it is to understand. So the whole object of this contract is to have that put in a one-page type document so that we can use it with our community stakeholders. Does that answer, Commissioner?
I, you know, I appreciate that. And I did look at this contract. So this is for the amount of $5,700. And the grant source again?
It is from the grant funding from Operation Youth Success that now sits with the county funding.
Yes. But the source of the grant funding, where does that money come from?
It was, it's a collaborative of four different foundations, Commissioner. The Sherwood Foundation, the Logier Foundation, I think one of the Scott Foundations. They all donated money to Operation Youth Success.
Appreciate that. And the graphics that we're talking about, I tuned into a meeting of the private corporation that's overseeing the development across the street the other day. And you made a presentation to that, which had, you know, pretty extensive graphics in it. Is that the kind of stuff we're talking about?
I would concentrate more in the presentation I did for that, like the second page, it had that highway graphic on ways that youth can exit.
Right.
Our goal is to take that and to make it more usable. So exit number one, this is what would be available exit number two. But really to expand on that visual because we feel it's such a great visual as to how youth can actually exit our juvenile justice system.
Right. So who fabricated that graphic?
That graphic was fabricated by Casey Family Foundation, a national organization that fabricated that. The framework of it, Commissioner, but each of the exits is really determined by each of the local jurisdictions.
And as to the selection of Kelly Lane Design, was there a bid process that?
There was not because of the dollar amount. So no.
How did we determine Kelly Lane Design?
I would have to defer to Lea Bayes, who does a lot of the communication work within the county, who is familiar with this individual and knows the work product of this individual.
So between now and the end of the year, this $5,700 for graphic design is going to produce what? Just so that we know.
The document I just described with the highway is what my goal is. But also to create something for our community providers as we go and give community talks. It really talks about facts versus myth. Let's start talking about how things really operate so that the facts are getting out and not just myth.
And we don't have the capacity in-house in Douglas County to produce such a document?
Not that I'm aware of from a graphic design type of background.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Well, where are we at? We ready for the vote then?
Yes, we are.
Okay. There are no further questions or comments. I would call for the vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Commissioner Boyle?
On this, there's a section G in this contract that I really am very much in favor of. It's called unavailability of funding. And I would like. And I would like, speaking to our general counsel, I'd like to see us make sure that we include that in every contract that we have, because in these uncertain times, we need to make sure that we can get out from under some of these obligations if we have to, if we do not get adequate funding to pay for them.
Thank you.
Through no fault of our own. Thank you.
Okay. I am going to turn the floor over to our vice chair, Commissioner Rogers, who has a couple of items on the agenda here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The item A is resolution honoring the life of Gail Sayers, and what I'd like to do is read the resolution first, actual motion is second. And I'm honored today that he was able to make it. His older brother, Roger Sayers, is here, and I'd like to ask him to say a few words. So, with that, it reads, "Whereas it was with great sadness that the Douglas County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Pro Football Hall of Fame running back Gail Lee Sayers, who passed away at his home in Indiana on September 23rd, 2020, at the age of 77. And whereas Mr. Sayers was born in May 1943 in Wichita, Kansas, grew up in Omaha, and graduated from Omaha Central High School in 1961. And whereas a high school track and football star, Mr. Sayers went on to attend the University of Kansas, becoming a two-time All-American and a three-time All-Big Eight athlete as a Kansas Jayhawk. And whereas known as the Kansas Comet in 1965, Mr. Sayers was a first-round draft pick of the Chicago Bears, where he remained for his National Football League career. And whereas in his seven seasons with Chicago, Mr. Sayers rushed for 4,956 yards and scored 56 touchdowns, going on to be selected as a four-time Pro Bowl pick and induction into the National Football Hall of Fame in 1977, and being selected into the NFL 100 All-Time in 2019. And whereas while playing for the Chicago Bears, Mr. Sayers gained admiration for his close friendship with teammate Brian Piccolo, who died at age 26 in 1970 from a rare form of cancer. According to the Chicago Tribune, Mr. Sayers and Mr. Piccolo were believed to be the first interracial roommates for a major professional sports organization, and their story was documented in the Emmy Award-winning movie, Brian's Song, produced in 1971. And whereas Mr. Sayers retired from the NFL in 1971 and went on to work in the athletic departments of both the University of Kansas and Southern Illinois University before founding his own computer technology company. And whereas both the Kansas Jayhawks and Chicago Bears have permanently retired, Mr. Sayers' jersey numbered 48 and 40 respectively, from their rousters in recognition of his contributions as an athlete. And whereas Mr. Sayers will be warmly remembered by his hometown of Omaha for his many successes, which stirred pride in black communities across the country, especially in North Omaha, where a generation of athletes have been inspired to compete and pursue higher education, in part due to the path set by Mr. Sayers. Now therefore be resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby commemorates the life, contributions and legacy of Mr. Gail Sayers and does hereby formally extend the Board's sense of sympathy to his former teammates, family and friends. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask for most to approve.
I would love to make that motion.
Thank you.
Such an awesome guy. And Commissioner Morgan has the second.
And just to open comments up and turn it over to Roger, and he's on. I just sent a text to Roger. I've had the honor of knowing Roger for the last couple of years, as he's a trustee at our church and having known him. And even sitting around the table with Roger, I didn't realize his significance here until the book two years ago, even though I've heard he was the world record holder and hunted me to dash for a minute, until the book Twenty Fourth and Glory. And not knowing that I was sitting around the table with a lot of these guys and hearing these stories and being able to fill in the color, I had a whole degree of admiration for him and a lot of people before him. I told Roger and trying to express my sympathies that I remember a conversation with my father, and you just see NFL films, and they would make comments about great running backs, and based on that, you know, everybody proclaimed Jim Brown. But I noted my father was quick to jump in and say, "No, no, no. It is Gail Sayers by far. I don't care what the time and the numbers is. Gail Sayers is the greatest of all time." So, with that, I'd like to ask Roger if he'd make a few comments, and thank you for being able to make the call.
Good morning, Roger.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to express my deepest appreciation on behalf of Gail's wife, his children and myself for this resolution and honor. It is. Mentha has stolen his life, but I would like to say that Gail, even though life took him away from Omaha, he was always, always very highly speaking of Omaha. He felt like his roots was here, and he didn't forget it. That's why he did a lot of work with Wesley House and came back as often as he could because he loved Omaha. And more often, maybe because I told him to get back here so he would know what's going on, get a different appreciation for life in Omaha, because it is a great city. And I just want to say thank you, appreciate it, and we're going to look forward to other Gail Sayers coming out of the Omaha area. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much, Roger. Anything else?
No.
Any further comments or questions to this resolution?
I just want to thank.
Chris?
For bringing this to the Board, and I can remember seeing that movie probably before Chris was born, but anyway, it was a pretty special story at that time, and Gail provided so much excitement and great things for all of us to watch and see. And thank you again, Chris.
Well, and Gail's reputation was as a star both on the field and off. I mean, he's just one of these people that I hold in the very highest esteem. Commissioner Boyle.
It's really an honor to have you speak to us. The Sayers name is a terrific name in Omaha and the Midwest and sports world. It is just really a real pleasure to listen to you this morning, and we're so saddened over your brother's death. The Sayers guys were really terrific and a very important part of our community. Twenty Fourth and Glory was a wonderful book. It covered so much of our terrific, our important history in Omaha, all of us who marveled at the athletic prowess and the success of the men who took on those sports and did so well. I'm not trying to make this about myself, but I always, this is really a story that's terrible, really, it's awful. I was invited by my very good friend Herb Rhodes, went to Cathedral with me and Wally Floriani. Well, Rhodes was African-American, Floriani was 100% Italian, and I'm almost 100% Irish. Well, Herb took us to Callum one afternoon to play basketball supposedly, and I'm not an athlete at all. I mean, I'm a total klutz. And he took us in there, and it was a setup. And I'm telling you, I was knocked out by the people we were supposedly playing against. And I was so knocked out, I don't remember who in the world was there, but boy, were they ever athletes, you know, just really something. And it was really a riot, because Herb started laughing from the moment we walked in the door, so I knew we were in trouble. But it's always been my pleasure to enjoy the support and the friendship of my friends on the north side. I always remembered with great respect and affection that when I ran for mayor, it was the north side that elected me, and I've never forgotten it. So, it's a real pleasure to have you here today on these sad circumstances. And I too congratulate and thank Commissioner Rogers for bringing you to us and to give us your words. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and the commission.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Well, thank you for being with us, and I'm very sorry for your loss, but I actually had the privilege of meeting your brother during an event that we had when the visitors' promotion department was under our jurisdiction. And remembering the hours that he sat signing little footballs and passing them out and then getting pictures with everybody. He was just very appreciative and just did it without any complaints or anything during that entire time. So, again, I'm very sorry for your loss, but I am very privileged that I had the chance to meet your brother, even though it was for a very short time and an event. It left a very lasting impression on you.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Mr. Sayers, I'd like to add my sympathy and condolences to you and your family on the passing of your brother. He was a great hero to me growing up. I followed his career from literally high school all the way through the pros, and he was a magnificent athlete and a great gentleman. Our condolences.
Thank you. Further comments? Then I would call for the vote, please.
Motion passes six to zero.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers, and thank you, Roger, for.
Thank you.
Joining us this morning. I'm going to start skipping around just a hair in the agenda now because I can. I want to go to get a lawyer out of here if we can. I would like to go under Finance Committee to the item 72, is approval to refinance the county's 2017 $44,260,000 public safety bond issue with a private placement of new bonds with JP Morgan Chase Bank, not to exceed $45 million in principal payments. Joe, briefly, what are we doing here?
What we're doing here is, you know, a little about, three and a half years ago, we issued some $44,260,000 worth of public safety bonds. And those we have been using for, you know, to redo the Fitzgerald Home and some things at Corrections. Under Nebraska state law, bonds cannot be called and refinanced for five years. So, and also, as you know, in the current environment, interest rates have fallen, long-term interest rates have fallen too close to all-time lows. So, we were sitting there and trying to think about, you know, what we could do to take advantage of that, and that's when I was approached by Bruce Lefler from Piper Sander. And he told me that his firm had been in discussions with JP Morgan, and JP Morgan was interested in doing a private placement to replace our bonds where we could essentially, even though we can't turn the bonds in for 17 months, we could lock in the current interest rates, which would give us the advantage. And JP Morgan was interested in Douglas County because we're AAA rated. So, you know that when I come and I talk a lot of times, I talk about how important it is to be AAA rated, and here's an example, where, you know, a large money center bank is coming to us and telling us that they want to hold our debt and offering us a pretty significant financial incentive to do so, in that the rates that we could lock in currently would generate, you know, close to $7 million worth of interest savings over the life of the bond. So, this looks like a neat opportunity. So, after I talked to Commissioners Boyle and Morgan on the Finance Committee, they said, "Yeah, let's pursue this." So, I relayed that to Bruce Lefler, and we got our bond counsel, Tyler Mullen from Baird Home involved. We've had discussions with JP Morgan, been able to work out the contract, and now there's the resolutions in front of you to approve this. And, you know, we really won't get the benefit till 17 months out is when this starts, because that's when the bonds can be called, but we're locking in the rates and the savings. And we're able to do that now and get the economic benefits. So, I think this is a really attractive financial proposal to us that will significantly reduce the cost of our long-term debt funding. And if you guys have any specific questions, I can try, or certainly Bruce and Tyler are here, who could answer any specific questions that I can't.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. This is really good news, and having been involved with the public safety bond issue from its beginning, I'm glad to hear that we're capturing this savings for the taxpayers. Joe, the original bond issue interest rate was what?
I think on average, it was a little bit over 3%, or maybe. Bruce, you want to come? Bruce knows the specifics, and so I'm going to defer to him, and he can talk to you about what the original bonds, because he also was involved in underwriting them, and now he can also talk about what the old bond is and exactly what we're looking at on the new bond. So, Bruce.
Yes, good morning. Bruce Lefler, Piper Sandler, Omaha. The interest rate on the outstanding bonds is 3.61%.
And the new interest rate, Bruce?
Yeah, the anticipated interest rate on the new bonds is 2.08%.
2.?
08.
That's significant.
That's a significant savings. You're correct.
So, over the life of the bonds, can you project the savings to the taxpayers?
Well, based on the numbers that we're currently looking at, and those numbers have stayed pretty consistent over the last couple of weeks, as Joe mentioned, we're talking about debt service savings that are like $6.9 million over the remaining life of the bonds, which is out through 2037. So, that's like $425,000 annually.
That's huge. Thank you. I mean, this is a classic example of how we should finance projects in Douglas County. We put this on the ballot, let people vote on it. It passed everywhere in Douglas County. We financed the thing. It was done on time and on budget, and now we're realizing even more savings by capturing an interest rate going down. And the heads up to Joe and to you for looking ahead. I understand that we're not going to be able to actually implement this for some time, but locking it in now is a brilliant idea, and having a savings of over almost $7 million is really big. So, thank you.
That's what we're here for.
Good news.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Do we, we don't have a motion yet, do we? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll vote out.
Okay. All right, we have a, I'll second. So, the motion is by Commissioner Kavanaugh with my second. Further questions or comments? Then I would call for the vote, please.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. I apologize to anybody I'm keeping waiting by hopping around. We never know when what seems like an insignificant item can end up taking a long time, and I do apologize to anybody that I'm keeping waiting. However, I'm going to go back to Commissioner Rogers for the presentation on the Douglas County Youth Center at this point. I know we have a number of people that have been waiting for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And what we're presenting today is a, putting the Board update on what we call a behavioral health initiative. And if you remember, two years ago, we set out an initial partnership with Charles Drew Medical Center, CHI Creighton University, UNMC and Nebraska Med to address the speeding up of eval situations and providing behavioral health services to the youth outside the facility. I'll let Kim do the introduction, but we made some significant progress in that respect, and she'll introduce the players on the line, and they'll go about the update. So, with that, Kim.
Good morning, Kim Havakati, Deputy County Administrator. Thanks for doing this out of order, because on the Zoom call, we do have some of the physicians to talk more about this great initiative. Commissioner Rogers gave the background. Who's going to be giving you a little bit more information this morning on this important initiative for our youth at DCYC? It's Greg Hepburn, who is our facilitator and expediter for these multidisciplinary teams that meet every week. And then on the Zoom, we have Kenny McMorris from Charles Drew Health Center to talk about its role and responsibility in this great initiative. We have Dr. Ranga, who is a child psychiatrist from UNMC. No, sorry, Dr. Ranga, from CHI Creighton Department of Psychiatry. That was a big mistake there. And then also from UNMC Department of Psychiatry, Dr. Zuhah, that's going to be talking about UNMC's role. So, I will turn it over to Kenny McMorris. No, we're going to do Greg first, so he can do it.
Thank you, Kim, and good morning, Greg.
Good morning, Commissioners. Greg Hepburn, expediter, Douglas County Youth Center, and I am here to discuss the process and data regarding the behavioral health initiative as it relates to the Douglas County Youth. Youth. Sorry. Got better. Sorry about that. Okay, so, just a brief description of my role as it specifically relates to this initiative. Basically, some of my responsibilities are maintaining a database. That database would entail identification of the youth, some general case information regarding the youth, the legal processes, such as what their charges are, whether or not it's a technical violation, whether it's a new charge or not. So, those are just some examples. And then specialized information, such as whether or not they came from placement, whether or not they are gang involved, whether or not they had an unlawful absence, so things of that nature are some of the things that I focus on specifically within the database. The second aspect of it, what, which is what I'm not really focusing on right now, just because of the times that we are in, which is the intake process. That intake process is basically an interview with the youth as they enter the facility. And then after that process, I obtain that information and then serve as more of a support role, and I still do that. I'll contact them via phone and, you know, get some background information, let them know where I'm at with what their case is as well, too, but just basically serve as a support in expediting the case. So, those are some, a couple of the things I do. In addition to that, there's the MDT process. Within that MDT process, basically, I facilitate those meetings, coordinate the expediting portion of it, and then I do send out a reflection of the minutes for each meeting as well. The final part, which kind of correlates not specifically to the initiative, but it has a significant component on it, which is I serve as a case process co-chair, and within that, just serving with representatives from the county attorney's office and from the public defender's office, and that is directly correlated with the expediting component of the meeting, the MDT process. So, within the multidisciplinary team, the MDT process itself, there are three primary components that we focus on. First one is the behavioral health piece. We also do the new admits, which is youth who are, who come within the seven-day window, and then previously staffed youth as well, too. So, youth, as they come within that seven-day window, if they're still there after 15 days, after 30 days, et cetera, just kind of touching base with their situation, since we have stakeholders that are at the Tuesday meetings every morning that consist of DCYC staff, which are myself as the expediter, our medical staff, behavioral health, education, detention staff, and the family liaison as well, too. So, every aspect of that component within DCYC is there. Participating agencies that are there would be probation, the public defender's office in St. Francis, and then, of course, bringing in the community providers, which is the behavioral health initiative specifically. And one of the best components of it is bringing in the community providers from UNMC, from CHI Creighton, and from Charles Drew Healthcare Center as well, too. So, that really allows us to sit down at the table and have an in-depth look and analysis at what's going on with the youth from a history standpoint, from a professional standpoint, and from a practical standpoint as it relates to what's going on specifically at a real-time at-glance in detention. So, within those meetings, there's really two aspects that we focus on, which is the behavioral health and the expediting component. The behavioral health, and there's two forms that I gave you. The first one that would relate to this is the MDT behavioral health and expediting process, which is this form here. That is just a really good overview of what that process looks like. So, we go through the background, which is the part where I open up with facilitating, giving some background information that I usually obtain from the intake or from being able to track down some of that information. Then we go through our internal process, which is having medical staff contribute, having detention, which is usually our operations manager, having Heartland Family Services at the table from a behavioral health standpoint. Then education, we have two, two to three people, typically three people that are there, because we have our OPS liaison who comes in to participate as well. And then, after that, then it's the family liaison that comes in. Once we go through that internal process, then we go through an external process. The external process would be probation, public defender's office, St. Francis, and then are the providers that are sitting at the table as well. And these are just opportunities for everyone to be able to participate in terms of any background information, historical information that they may have, as well as any professional leadership skills that they may be able to bring to the meeting at that time. After all, everyone contributes some generalized information. We go through an open discussion component, which is where, you know, we'll talk about additional collateral information, any recommendations for internal interventions, and go through from there. So, that's where the behavioral process really starts to take place. And what we do with that is we talk about two components. The first one is stabilization. So, for any stabilization that may need to take place, the goal for that is specific communication reported back to unit staff for youth who may be having some type of mental health issues, they may be having behavioral health issues, but it just gives some specific feedback for JDS and unit staff on the detention side to be able to address those. The second component is the engagement piece. So, the goal for that is just specific communication to report back to our educators about what that process may look like, to be able to get them engaged in their academic component. And the main thing is for stabilization is to address any risks or watches that the LMHPs are, come up with at the time, and then for both, really, to address interventions and then strategies for stabilization of behaviors. So, that is the behavioral health component, and the second piece is the MDT process. So, now within the MDT expediting component, as I mentioned, new admits that are within that seven-day window, the goal there is to identify the youth who are identified as either pre-adjudicated or probation involved at that point. And for the pre-adjudicated youth, the things that we look at are community reentry, whether they're going to go home, whether they'll go to the home program, specifically foster care, or even some type of shelter. And then out-of-home placements, in addition to that, would be like some type of foster, shelter home, our group home, and PRTF or RTC. The PRTF specifically, those youth aren't necessarily from pre-adjudicated, but those are some possible options down the road in terms of placement for them. The previously discussed youth that we kind of go through after the probation, youth that we discussed, the goal there is for youth with release orders, those are the youth that we really kind of focus on, and then youth who are there for 30 days or longer, and then for youth, if they're in adult court, if they're there 90 days or longer. Those are kind of those benchmarks that we look for to really start to key in on, specifically for youth that are in adult court. And I'll go into some reasons why the adult court might take a little bit longer here in a second. But for juvenile court, usually we'll look for youth with felonies who are awaiting placement openings, and then those who may have transferred from adult court and have been going through there throughout that process. Those are some of the reasons that kind of flagged as to why those youth are there. In terms of adult court, usually what we see is there's an excessive continuances filed, there are changes of attorneys that are excessive that take place, and then low resources for youth who may go home and may be on probation, but they don't necessarily have those access to resources. So, trying to get some of the things, which is where this initiative kind of ties in, and I'll go over that here in a second as well, too. Lot of exciting things that are going on. So, the impact of the behavioral health initiative, in my estimation, is kind of twofold. The first is assistance with mental health needs, and that's, it has a huge impact both in detention and out in the communities as well. Really, just kind of going through, what they do is, we have started the referral, the MDT referral process, and that started June 11th. And basically, we started referring youth to Charles Drew for them to come in, well, to do Zoom meetings, to be able to have sessions with youth at the time. And we've had a lot of great results from that. More recently, on August 27th, we started a youth request to be able to have services, which has really been significant as well, too. And some of the checklist, the symptoms that are on that paper that we hand out to them are things like depression, whether they're feeling irritability, hopelessness, anger, things such of that nature, are all issues that they're looking to address, and, you know, kind of sitting down and talking with them about that. Some of the things that we've noticed is that within the youth that we have seen, especially the ones who have requested it, is there's been, they've all been maintaining appropriate behavioral levels. I think no one has been below a level three, which, you know, is significant. And within those youth, there's also been no room restrictions as well, too. And I mean, we're talking about not just youth who are there on juvenile charges, but youth that are there on adult charges that are, you know, on more intense, higher intensity units. So, that's really significant as well. The other aspect that it's had an impact on is the average length of stay, and where I'm not able to quantify that right now, because there are some growth opportunities that we're looking at to be able to track some data and do some things with that. I can speak to the, to be able to qualify it, and that's directly through the evals and the assessments of having UNMC at the table with us, of having CHI, having Charles Drew in those meetings with us as well, too. It just, it really has expedited. There are times when the, in talking with probation, where the judge hasn't even ordered the eval yet, and the eval is completed, you know? And that was one of the things that held youth there the longest, was waiting, you know, to be able to get evaluations scheduled. And, you know, there's, so there's still some things to work out with that as it relates to growth opportunities, and I've just kind of cited four specific ones. So, some growth opportunities, and speaking with probation, you know, they're very candid and very insightful with a lot of the things that they recommend to us. But for myself, what I notice is that capturing better data is a really good opportunity for us, and for myself specifically, I was able to get some demographic information of all the youth who have gone through the MDT process within the past six months. And it's been good, but it was, it was interesting going back to, you know, to retrieve all that information. It was, you know, kind of a time-related process, but it's still good because it gives us a lot of significant information, but it lets me know that there needs to be some tracking of that. So, demographics from MDT that we staff, and then also referrals made, and then what some of those outcomes are in terms of what that time process looked like is a good opportunity, tracking the length of time for requests that are made, and then assistance with contacting family for service for consent for, to treat, specifically for Charles Drew, because when they're in detention with us, it's fine, but when they go into the community, they're released to go home, sometimes it can be a difficult process to be able to track that down. So, finding what we can do to kind of bridge that gap for them, you know? Everything that we can do for that is one. So, that's one component. Secondly, how do we legally and ethically share evaluations, assessments from DCYC without direct court involvement? And that's a really good opportunity, because there have been situations where we've had the information, but we're not able to legally get that without having a court order from the judge. And so, you know, what that looks like in terms of some language within court orders, where we're able to make that information more accessible. So, we're having those conversations right now to see what that process looks like, to make it a little bit more fluid. The third is presenting information to the court when probation or the public defenders are not involved in a case, so primarily the pre-adjudicated cases. And with that, there's been situations where, like I mentioned, you know, eval was done ahead of time, but it wasn't submitted, then goes back, and then the judge actually orders, you know, either the same or a different type of evaluation. So, we've had a couple of instances where, you know, the youth may have sat in some additional time that they shouldn't have. And like I said, this is just all kind of growing pains within the process to figure out, you know, what those discussions need to be to take place. But for the most part, for a significant part, that process has been pretty seamless. Finally, how are we, how are we connecting youth to psychiatric services after their release from DCYC? And so, those are the four components that we looked at, and I just jotted down some things that you can kind of look through as well, too, as it relates to the psychiatric services. The last portion on here is the MDT staff use, just some demographics that I broke down, and, oh, thank you. So, basically, over the past six months, we've seen 117, or we've staffed 117 youth, and the racial breakdown, these are actually not in percentages. I didn't realize that they came out in percentages. These are actually hard numbers here, but 63 African-Americans, 17 Hispanic-Americans, 16 Caucasian-Americans, three Asian-Americans, one Native American, and then the gender breakdown is 86 male to 14 females. Age breakdown is our largest was 16-year-olds, and then 27, the number 27 was for 15-year-olds. So, those are two, and then 17-year-olds were at 21. So, those are our three largest, and it kind of shows consistency with what our population is as well. And then the last one is the legal breakdown, what type of court that they're in. So, 90 were in juvenile court versus 27 being in adult court. 81 were in with new charges versus 36 being there with technical violations. And the last one is recidivism, where we had 90 youth who had been with us before and were repeat offenders, and then 27 were actually new. And so, even though some of them were pre-adjudicated, they were there on new charges, but they had, they were recidivating. So, that's that portion of it, and then I will turn over to Mr. McMorris for his component.
Can you all hear me? Hello? Can you all hear? Okay. Good morning, Chairman Duda, Commissioners. I am Kenny McMorris and the CEO here at Charles Drew Health Center, and it's a pleasure to be before you all, albeit it's virtually, but truly a pleasure. As I mentioned before, we embarked on this journey a couple of years, maybe a year or so ago, and it's really refreshing and good to see the progress that's been made. Don't want to duplicate anything that Mr. Hepburn went over in his presentation, but just really want to speak to the fact that the work that's happening right now is really, how are we connecting young people and families to the services while they're there and making sure that they're getting the supports that they need upon release? And so, throughout this process, we've done a lot in terms of fine-tuning, doing everything we can to make sure that across the continuum in terms of juvenile justice, making sure that families are getting and young people are getting the supports they need. So, really working with the DCYC, the MDT meetings have been significant for us, just because of the multidisciplinary aspects of it. We've worked a lot with probation, the Juvenile Assessment Center, as well as the home program. So, one of the things that Mr. Hepburn mentioned is that our ability to get referrals from a different, a number of different sources has created kind of what we call a no wrong door. So, the partners here, again, with UNMC and CHI and Creighton, we really are looking at, how do we make sure that we fill in the gap where these young people and the parents have the supports that they need? For Charles Drew, as many of you know, we're a community health center, so everything that we do is really looking at how do we address the social drivers and social determinants of health, and making sure that our families get the right care at the right place at the right time. And so, in light of the pandemic, we know that a lot of things have had to be altered. Many of the young people that are in DCYC, along with in the community, are experiencing isolation, but yet we still are isolation, but yet we still are moving forward with the project. And so from a provider perspective, from a community perspective, just want to, again, extend our appreciation and thanks for allowing us to be a part of this. Again, for a lot of the young people, we are making sure that they have and they're being empowered to make decisions that are in the best interest for them and their families. While we're talking about behavioral health, a big part of the work that we're doing here with this project is making sure that individuals have a healthcare home. So the ability to have a primary medical provider, someone that they're spending time with outside of the healthcare perspective, mental health aspect and working through that integration. And additionally, we provide support for oral health. And so we know that an individual needs full health and comprehensive healthcare to really advance as it relates to their overall healthcare needs. So this project is really moving things forward to make sure that there is a no wrong door, that there's no gaps in services. As Mr. Hepburn mentioned, we are always and we're constantly evolving. There are areas where we know we can improve and one of the things is being able to make sure that we're getting the appropriate consent and documentation from the parents and guardians and but involving them in the process. I think informed consent is so important and making sure that the families understand what it means and what the services that are being provided, what does it mean for their young person and what does it mean for them? So that's a big part of the recovery and treatment as they come back into the community. I'll lob it over to some of our other partners here with Dr. Zuhai and Dr. Ranga. But from a community perspective, again, we're honored and we're grateful to continue to partner for you all to support our young people.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Or Kevin, who?
Dr. Ranga, can you?
Yes. Good morning. It's, it's a privilege to be here. My name is Jyotsna Ranga and I'm from Creighton and CHI. And I'd like to speak to the Creighton CHI role in the Behavioral Health Initiative. Are you able to see my slides?
Oh, we see you.
I'm just going to go ahead and present without the slides. So along the timeline, we participated in February in an Omni workshop to understand the Behavioral Health Initiative. As of May 2020, we commenced participation in the weekly MDTs via Google Meet. And then in May, DCYC, Mark LaFleur and Pamela A.G. Lowry oriented the CHI Creighton faculty and trainees to DCYC. So from June, we have been doing psychiatric assessments and this is conducted by a CHI attending child and adolescent psychiatrist. I've done some of them and there have been colleagues of mine who have done some. In addition, we have a Creighton senior child and adolescent fellow physician, learning to do these evaluations with supervision from the attending physician. We've done about three to four assessments per month, about 11 assessments so far. And the assessments are done in coordination with the nursing and the medical department. We connect with the family, get consent. We also coordinate with Heartland Family and the therapists working with the children and adolescents. The treatment recommendations are then discussed with the treatment team and as needed, a brief summary is provided to court. Creighton Child and Adolescent Psychiatry Fellowship, of which I'm the training director. The goal here is to train future child and adolescent psychiatrists about the interface of the juvenile justice system and mental health and to sensitize and develop our workforce to serve the needs of these youth in this community. Juveniles come to us, as we know from a variety of situations, and up to 75% of the population we see, this is a national statistic, in the juvenile justice system have one or more psychiatric diagnoses. And about 90% or higher of these juveniles report exposure to major trauma. And as Mr. Hepburn discussed, there's also the healthcare disparity over representation of minority youth and disproportionate minority contact. So the psychiatric assessment really taps into the whole history, general psychiatric history, trauma, suicide and violence risk, a little bit into the substance use history, special education history, medical and dental, and the identity development of the youth. Suicide risk is a significant concern in this population. National data has suggested that youth in juvenile detention were almost three times more likely to die by suicide when compared to youth in the general public. So this is an important part of what is being done from the behavioral health aspect at DCYC. Impressions so far and lessons learned, as substantiated by the previous presenters, youth that we are seeing have complex psychiatric and substance use diagnoses. The collaborative discussions that we have at the MDT between education, psychology, probation, DCYC and legal parties, this is essential as this generates a comprehensive understanding of what the youth's needs are. Timely risk assessments for suicide and violence risk, trauma, developmental education and learning disabilities is very important. And many benefit from a psychiatric assessment treatment as well as follow-ups. We also focus and recommend the therapy that's happening at DCYC with both Heartland as well as Charles Drew, individual, family, and then think through the MDT and the family liaison folks, figure out how to step down to community-based culturally sensitive treatment. And then also discuss vocational and educational supports that are critical to their successful transition into the community. So thank you again for the opportunity to let me discuss our contribution and it's been a privilege being here with all of you this morning. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ranga. I love the multidisciplinary team approach that have all players at the table.
Dr. Zuhai.
Good morning. My name is Ken Zuhai. I'm a pediatrician addiction medicine specialist at the University of Nebraska Medical Center. So first, I just like to thank the county commissioners and for allowing me to be part of this initiative and for the ability to work with the youth at DCYC. I learned much from them every time I get a chance to interact with them. Second, I'm really grateful for the community partners for this project, for their time and their expertise and will toward the goal of the best care possible for their youth in our care. This includes the powerful presence of CHI, the collaborative spirit with, with Dr. Ranga, Dr. Demond in the past, and now Dr. Marsh has been great. And the presentations by Mr. McMorris and Mr. Hepburn are, just show kind of just the collaboration that exists at this time, at this place. I just really feel like the cosmic tumblers have fallen into place right now for, for things to come together. And then finally, I'm grateful for a chance to once again work with juvenile probation. I worked with them in my past life, working for Department of Health and Human Services and their passion for the best care for the kids is just palpable. So from the UNMC perspective, I would like to talk about Dr. Erica Franta first. She's a psychologist at Monroe Meyer and she's had a lot of experience treating youth in juvenile justice system in her training in Texas. So she provides insight from the psychological perspective and analysis of previous testing done on the youth. One of her superpowers, I see, is her ability to synthesize assessments and evaluations that have been previously performed on the youth. And she provides a coherent narrative and gives recommendations for the youth and she serves as, in a consultation role at this time. Dr. Elizabeth Penner, who is trained by Dr. Ranga and her group at CHI, has, has just joined UNMC after graduating, completing her child and adolescent psychiatry fellowship with them. She will be evaluating youth at DCYC through Charles Drew and for the kids who need the psychiatric care and working in close collaboration with Dr. Marsh and Dr. Ranga at, at CHI. And then finally, just as a pediatrician addiction medicine specialist myself, I started working at DCYC and again grateful for this opportunity in April 2019. And so I evaluate youth that have been involved with substance use and with other co-occurring behavioral health or mental health conditions to consider next steps in their treatments. And so in that process, I work closely with Dr. LaCroix and Buffy Hostreiter, who are the pediatric care providers for the youth, with the nursing staff and with the therapists from Heartland who work at DCYC. And I also work with juvenile probation officers as they request evaluations, some of the youth under the care who are placed at DCYC. And in that process, at times, I provide ongoing care for the youth as they leave DCYC. I'm grateful for that opportunity at times to be able to do that. All three of us, Dr. Franta, Dr. Penner and myself, participate in the weekly MDT meetings and those were described really well by, by Dr. Ranga. So I'm not going to go into that. She did a great job describing those. So for me, the Behavioral Health Initiative, and I wish I had cool slides like everybody else does. But, you know, what it's, what it's done is it's really brought together experts from across the city to combine efforts to find the best way to evaluate and treat and advise on optimal care for each youth in secure care placement at DCYC. Again, I just feel like, I don't know, that the cosmic tumblers have just fallen into place, really. These people are experts who have also have a passion for caring for kids and their families who are living on the margins of society and that's evidenced by their willingness to have 78 meetings on Friday mornings. They're also keenly aware, and Dr. Ranga did a great job talking about this and as did, did Mr. Hepburn, of the disproportionate minority contact that exists and they are constantly considering these issues surrounding diversity, equity and inclusion. I've learned so much from all these folks. So what I see so far is initiatives led to conversations about electronic medical record that will assist a collection of data and Mr. McMorris and Charles Drew have a significant role in this. I think that that is going to do so many things for us, including the collection and, you know, just having a place for the data for us to decide how well we're doing, what we're doing is making sense. And I just think it's going to be a huge part. I've learned so, you know, much from that, that process. I truly believe this work is going to lead to better outcomes for youth and, and, you know, I think that we're going to see decrease recidivism. I believe just based on, on the data around the country that we're going to see a decrease in behavioral health and mental health symptoms, a decrease in substance use and improvement in school attendance and performance, as well as improved family relationships. And so I've seen, as, as Mr. Hepburn and Mr. McMorris have talked about, that the youth are getting assessments and evaluations in a very timely fashion and they're happening faster than they were in the past, which is allowing the youth to be able to leave DCYC in a more expedient way. And, and, you know, really to find the next best placement for them for their ongoing health from this point forward so that we, again, can reduce their chances of having to come back to DCYC in the future. So I'm finally grateful for, for Kim Havakati and the, the strength and vision and, and collaboration that she's brought to this project as well. And I think she has really done a great job of pulling together all of this. So, you know, just in summary, again, I think other folks said things just much better than I did surrounding what is being done right now at DCYC and I'm just really grateful to be part of it. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Zuhai. Kim?
Thank you, everybody. Kim Havakati, Deputy County Administrator. Just open for any questions. I appreciate all the commissioners' time this morning. I know this took an extended time period and I'm for taking us out of order. I think it's very important that we hear and that you guys hear all the impressive collaborative work that is happening and also within DCYC that we now have psychiatrists, psychologists, we have therapists, that everything that's going on within that facility is so important for, for our youth that are in that facility. So any questions? Otherwise, I'm sure anybody on the Zoom call or Greg or myself, please visit with us individually and we can give you more background.
I think Commissioner Kraft was trying to get our attention.
That was quite a while ago.
Oh, okay. I'm a little slow, Mark. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this. Just one quick question. The pages aren't numbered, but it's the MDT staffed youth demographics page, which shows, I believe, racial breakdown, which indicates an 84% children of color participation in this particular initiative.
I believe what Mr. Hepburn had said with regards to that is this, it shouldn't be a percent, it should be 86 youth or 84 youth, not the percent.
Oh, these are not percentages.
Those are not percentages. That is the number of youth. So we'd have to take the 117 total youth by the 86. So when you look at the youth of color, it does pretty much match currently what's in DCYC.
Okay. So we're in the 80th percentile plus or minus?
Yep. 80 to 85% and that's pretty much what we're running for youth of color within DCYC.
So these numbers, if you delete the percentage typo on here, are actual kids?
Those are actual kids, actual youth that we are seeing.
Okay. So how do we get, you know, albeit not great, but a slightly different percentage of kids participating in this than we have in our population, if you know?
I guess I'd almost need you to rephrase that question, Commissioner. I think...
Based on what it says on the page, appeared to be a percentage breakdown and it's not. It's an actual headcount.
Correct.
Right. But the headcount adds up to 86 kids out of 100 and some kids. So it's, you know, 80% plus or minus, whereas the minority population of the youth center, I think, is in the high 70s, low 80s, maybe. It's slightly different. What I'm saying is, is there, is there a difference in racial composition regarding participation in this initiative versus the population that actually...
No. No, it's pretty much the same percentages. And I can do have some data for you, Commissioner, to show you that it pretty much mirrors what the population is at DCYC.
Because my question's always been, why do we have such a racial disparity in our population? And now this is just reflected in the racial disparity in the MDT staffed youth.
Correct. Correct. It's all based upon the underlying population that's there, which I think the positive note, Commissioner, is that within the MDT team, we're seeing the same percentages so that there's not any disproportionality within the use of the MDT team.
Yeah, and I salute your optimism. That's, that's like saying the same bad percentages that we have in our overall population of overrepresentation of minorities are reflected in the MDT overrepresentation of minorities.
Very much.
And that's not good. Thank you.
The underlying data is not good, correct?
Thank you. Commissioner Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do like to, I guess, focus more on that optimism and positives of what we're doing here. This is a perfect example of how data was brought forth to us during reporting monthly on what we had at the youth center in terms of our youth, the makeup of them, et cetera, et cetera. And we took that data and we continued to ask the question, why? Why are we seeing this, this, this and this? And we continued to see data and we continued to ask those questions. And then we discussed those issues and we moved on an opportunity to figure out a solution. And this is implementing that solution and seeing the first really results of those efforts. And to me, that is a good thing. It isn't perfect. It doesn't address everything, but as you all know, mental health has been my key point in many, many aspects of my work as a commissioner. And to see the results of this and the work that's being done in a public-private partnership of making sure we are addressing that issue, not only within the walls of our youth center, but when they leave our youth center and go into the community. So I'm very encouraged by this. It took us really a long time to get where we are and I think that's a good thing that we're doing right now and we can start seeing the results. I do have one question about when they do leave the facility and they do... I do have one question about when they do leave the facility, and they do, you know, we are engaging while they're in the facility, and then getting them hopefully connected within the Charles Drew system. At that point, do we bring in the family and engage the family as a whole? Because, again, we can do what we need to do with the youth, but if we are not extending our assistance to the family unit, then I think we're missing the boat there. So, if that's happening, I think we should, one, know about that, but two, celebrate that, because, again, that's a really, really important component of this whole reform that we're talking about.
Well, and we, Commissioner, I think we do have some great first steps on that, because the youth center does have a family liaison that works directly with the family when the youth are in there. That family liaison is part of the MDT team. Charles Drew has a navigator within the MDT team, so that family liaison, the navigator, works with the family even once the youth leaves, to make sure that that family and youth remain engaged, and that those services are available in the community, whether it's at Charles Drew, or whether it is somewhere else in the community, we have that parts of the system working. That is something we've really been working hard on the last three or four months, to do those connections. So, I believe the framework is there. It's in its infancy, but the framework is there.
Thank you, and that's great. And just to piggyback on what Chair Duda was saying in between the speakers about the MDTs, I agree with you that that concept and use of those MDTs is phenomenal, and again, I think we're seeing positive results, and so I give kudos to everybody that is involved in the project, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Commissioner Duda, may I speak?
Commissioner Kraft, go ahead.
Yes. Kim, are we keeping track of how many people are in their original family unit? How many youth are homeless? How many are in foster care? Are we keeping track of that data?
I think there's a couple of different ways, Commissioner, to look at it. We might not have all of that data at the time they enter the youth facility. We would be able to track data that, once the youth is discharged from the detention facility, where they are going. Are they going home? Are they going to a treatment facility? Are they going to a shelter? Are they going to a foster home? We would be able to track the discharge and where they are going.
Can't we do a question of the youth as they're coming in, to find out where they're coming from? Because I think that's an important question.
I think a lot of that information, if not available through the youth center, Commissioner, through our collaborative actions, probation, that does the intake interview at the time or needs to be done before any youth can enter, any detention facility in our state would have a lot of that information and would have it available. It might not be on, you know, the county's data system, but probation would have that, and we'd be able to work with them to get that type of information, Commissioner.
I'd like to see us get it and include it in our database, because, as I said, I do see that as important in analyzing what's happening.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. Further comments? Commissioner Boyle?
I agree completely with Commissioner Kraft on that. I think it's one of the notes that I took. I took an awful lot of notes, but one of the things that I think is really important is that, at least, I'll speak as a commissioner, I don't have enough information about the home life of the children, and what they're putting up with, or what their experience has been. Are we doing anything to, excuse me, test for lead? Do we take a, do they ever have a physical in the sense of a blood test, or do we draw on that? Because I think lead really can, obviously, as we all, I think, agree, can really change how a person grows up, and can affect, you know, this education and the whole thing. Are we doing anything about that? Do we look into their health that way?
We do look out as to their physical health, and we, you know, through our medical staff. There's a couple of areas that we are exploring for the future, working with all the great physicians that are part of this collaborative, is really looking at how many of our youth have traumatic brain injuries, might have a TBI, how many of them might have learning disabilities, or autism, or something else, that maybe has been untreated, because we know from an educational standpoint, a lot of our youth there do have IEPs, educational programs, because they are academically behind. And then, from a lead poisoning, that's also been added to the list that we're looking at to see what that process might be. Right now, those are just in the beginning phases, Commissioner. I do think they are very important. The other important thing this team is working on of, that's the MDT team, is really trying to come up with some good assessments and screenings as soon as that youth enters the detention facility, so we can start doing screenings and assessments for some of the things you're just talking about. We don't have that process down yet, but all the physicians and the individuals that were mentioned are helping us to come up with what would be the appropriate evidence-based tools that we would use to assist us in doing that.
Then I wanted to ask, I've got an awful lot of questions, but I wanted to ask about the, you know, trauma as well, because so many people across the board have trauma. There was a, Robert Redford's son, Jamie, was in Omaha, and I had a chance to talk to him at a national conference, and he did a story, or did a film on trauma, and it started out with children who had been traumatized, and their mothers were interviewed as well. And it turns out that during this film, it was shown, I think at film streams, but I didn't see it, but it, what it showed was that the mothers who were talking about their children being traumatized, they themselves had been traumatized, and many of them had really emotional experiences during the filming of this, taking of this film. And it just showed how widespread trauma is of one sort or another, and how it affects a person's life. And I think that's going to be really important, and I think brain injuries, Commissioner Borgeson was involved in that several years ago, and got me involved in it as well, is very, very important. So, anyway, I really would like you to explore those things. The, I'm curious, I talked to, a few weeks ago, I went out and talked to some people. One of the persons I saw was Nick Giuliano, who I have a great deal of respect for, in addition to his experience in Boystown. He's also the coach for my, one of my grandsons in sports, so I enjoy seeing him that way, too. But he's working on a, doing some building north of 56th and Ames, and he's talking about having 30 or so beds up there, and I don't know who's going there, and how they get there, and do you have any information on that, or do you know anything about it?
Yes. They have been kind enough to involve the county in some of the initial discussions as they're looking at setting this up. Right now, it does plan to be a 32-bed facility each, in what we would call pods. It would be like six youth living together, so they would be separated. It would be mainly post-adjudication, so those are youth that would already be on probation. The key becomes that we see for a lot of our youth that are on probation, is that facilities accept the youth, and then they eject the youth. They say, "Sorry, it doesn't fit our milieu," or "The kid is not amenable to our treatment." The whole object of this facility is that, once they accept a youth, there would be no eject, that they are going to remain with that youth until that youth is ready for discharge from their facility.
Doesn't that restrict who they accept?
It might. They, right now, don't anticipate it will. I don't, I think they're still working, Commissioner, on a lot of the details of it, but they plan on having what they always call a no eject, no reject type of situation.
And is that being financed entirely privately?
Currently, I believe the initial, the financing to get this set up, yes, is all private funders.
How about operations?
Once it is operational, then these youths should qualify for Medicaid, private insurance funding for the treatment end of it, and then if they are state wards and probation, they would be paying for the room rate, the daily room and board rate.
Will the county government have any obligation?
No.
Okay.
Unless it's a county-responsible youth that is there, that will be extremely difficult, because you won't have a court order pre-adjudication, putting a youth in any type of treatment facility. That would be extremely rare.
Okay. Then, one of the things that has bothered me a lot is that, and I brought it up before, and I was looking at so many questions that I have, I'll have to come, I'll have to buy several of you lunch, and we'll talk about this, but including Mr. Borgeson. But anyway, I'm looking at, on this last page, MDT Staffed Youth Demographics. Over the right-hand side, you know, there's a 36, I guess it's young people, who have been, who have committed a technical violation. What is a, maybe, I don't know who should answer that, but maybe Mr. Hepburn, but...
Technical violation are those youth that are adjudicated and on probation, and while on probation, they committed some violation of their probation contract.
Okay.
It usually is a judge then that orders that the youth has to be placed back in detention because of that technical violation.
Okay, well, I am so opposed to technical violations, I can't tell you. It is setting these kids up for failure. I really, it really is. They come from, it's like me, if you, Ann always said that I was a hoarder, and I think she's finally right. I can't let anybody in my home. I won't, not even the cleaning lady can come in, okay? But it fosters behavior that they're not going to succeed, and I'm not going to concede it at not being a slob. You know, I really am. You don't need to look at my office, you don't need to look at that desk here, that's just the way I operate. So, this is how these children are operating. They are not, they're not slobs. They're young people who have not had, for something, they haven't had orderly lives, and so to expect them to show up on, you know, October 10th at noon for a hearing, or 1:00 or something, not going to happen, and we're just, we need to figure out an alternative to this probation. We need to maybe home visit, not even that, I don't know what it is. Something has to give on that, I'm really worried about it. The one thing I did notice, too, that I want to mention, is the emphasis has been on the North Side, and I understand that, but there's also an awful lot of Latina and Latino people in the facility, and I don't see that kind of activity in South Omaha. Like, is one world involved in this? It's not. Is there something, or is it? Is there something we should do to highlight that, or get that involved, or what should we do?
I do believe they, we do need to do that more, Commissioner. I think we do need to look at expanding into some of South Omaha with regards to it. We do have a lot of programs and services in South Omaha. We just need to make sure that this team is all-inclusive, but I know they are making referrals there, so...
Okay. One quick thing I want to bring up, I've got a lot of things, but I would like to bring St. Francis in for another update, because I know they're having some difficulty, and I want to make sure that our children are safe and all the rest of it in those facilities. I think they're probably understaffed. I know they got a low bid, and we get what we pay for. I have a lot of other questions, and I'll be in touch with all of you, one way or the other. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Further?
Claire, close. Just, if I could answer a little bit of Commissioner Boyle's question, and just allude to some future opportunities. You know, the strategic piece of Charles Drew is not only from what the numbers are, but also, you know, they're partnering with one world to do some referral there for those kids that may be relevant to that area. So, they, even though they're not at the table, Kenny and Charles Drew staff are working through in that respect to make that facilitation happen. So, they're covered in that respect. The other point, too, is the thing that's strategically good about Drew and other things of that sort, is the facilitation that the FQHCs have with the school districts, and being able to have this continuum of care, of service with the district, and hopefully pick up some of those things. And also, you know, depending on where this kid is, they give options, because Drew has a federal contract for homeless, and also other things. So, if any of those kids apply there, there's a service that can happen to get to some of those kids that may be in that realm, or their family. And so, that connection happens, and as Kim stated, I just want to thank all of them for the commitment, particularly, you know, for all of us to be on those 7:00 AM calls to try to make this thing happen. They're not as frequent as they are, but the commitment to make that happen. The option, I think that that gives us not only here now, but in the future, is there's a lot of conversations going on that happened at the beginning, when we started this two years ago, about, we have a medical director at the adult facility. We don't de facto have one here, and they've been doing a lot of work in the basis to kind of help us get there for the medical piece. The work that Kim mentioned, that they're doing in regards to trying to identify a need assessment, when they get that needs assessment done to some degree, that will help us tremendously upfront with the pre-adjudicated youth, that will be able to get served outside with services, and not have to serve in there. So, they're doing a lot of linchpins, that once they unlock it and get it done, it'll have some magnifying effects that'll get us there, and get us to the families and everything of that piece. So, I just want to thank them for their commitment and their time, and just thank them for the progress that's being made, and also just Kim for pulling them together and driving it to that degree.
Thank you. Very good. Well, it's a great discussion. It is exciting to see the progress being made, the good things happening as these collaborations come together. I love hearing from our community partners. That's absolutely the way to move forward, is working together with this multidisciplinary team. Further questions or comments before we move on? Good morning, Larry.
Good morning. Thank you. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Just some general observations on the theme of the flip charts, and maybe some statements from my experience through the past years, that aren't necessarily ignorant. But in the process of trying to help these children, every one of the experts is, so to speak, concentrating on their own tree in the forest, and not considering the overall forest. The overall forest is what is causing the behavior. Everybody's a behavior expert. We have checklists for behavior. People are classifying me based on a checklist of my exhibited behaviors. Excuse me. But if I have an infection, somebody wants to know what caused the infection. If I hear a girl screaming, I'd like to know why she's screaming. We don't just assess their behavior and do away with them for an assessment by a group of experts. So, please, when you're doing your good work, consider, first of all, the youth, do they lose their rights because they're detained? Are they not still a citizen? A lot of the wording and verbiage and statements have to do with the things that are, the language of special education, and IDEA, and IEPs, so we must be coordinating with that, because those youth that are detained fall under those federal laws, first of all, primarily. So, unless they've never been in the school system, they must already fall under those. Now, I can tell you from my own experiences in quite a few past years, and not such good experiences, with the MDTs, the intent of those laws are that even me, as a grandparent, might be a part of that MDT. But the practice of the professionals, who are protecting their own salaries, so to speak, is that, yeah, he doesn't make any difference. Whatever he knows about the kid doesn't make any difference. We're doing a checklist, we're not doing, find out what the family knows about him. So, I hear all this, but it's not really practiced. And, yeah, they're short at times, so they don't have time to listen to me at a meeting. How does that help a kid? It doesn't. So, stop, slow down, go back and find out what was the cause of this child's problem. Was it me? Didn't the education system identify something? If they did, did they identify it wrong? If you don't have a parent on that team, if you don't have the child on that team, and they're supposed to be a part of, particularly if that child asked for it, that's the law. But if you don't listen to them, you're violating their rights. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, further comment?
Louis C. Madness, 3306 Burt Street. Just wanted to make an observation.
Just wanted to make an observation. The numbers here that was presented was helpful for me, because it showed, it showed the breakdown on where probation gets involved with the entering and exiting. And I've heard the community speak out on this. I've heard commissioners speak out. I've heard experts that you bring here speak about the juveniles that are in detention, and you guys are giving them special consideration. I would say extraordinary consideration for what they did and how to rectify what's going on with justice and community. I haven't heard probation come in and say what extraordinary considerations they're going to be giving the juvenile offenders. I try to go to these meetings as much as possible, because this is a point where information is provided. I try to hunt down, you know, where the sources for the causes are, but probation seems like such an convoluted setup, and also, I'm not going to have any impact engaging with probation. So that's what I'm saying. Like, we give these juvenile offenders extra consideration, and I'm asking, what is probation? What kind of consideration is probation putting forth as we have, you know, as we talk about the juveniles in detention? Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Commissioner Borgerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did Kim still here? But one graphic that I think would be beneficial as to a report or an attachment continuously as we discuss these things is, many years ago, Melissa from GA created a zip code map for me as to where all the clients were that we served. And I had since asked Brad and actually Mike Myers as well, from our adult facilities, to do the same. So if we could add that graphic, and I think I sent it to you, but if you don't have it, I'll send you the one that Melissa had put together for GA. And all it is, is it's a map, and it shows all of our zip codes in Douglas County, and then the number of folks that we serve within each one of those zip codes. I think that being a part of a presentation, or a part of our monthly report, you know, on the last Tuesday would be a good idea. And again, it's a visual for us to better understand where the youth and families are that we're serving. Thank you.
We can do that, Commissioner. Kim Havakati, Deputy County Administrator, we can do that. We do have it for the Juvenile Assessment Center already completed, and so we're working through the rest of them to get that available for you, so.
Commissioner Boyle.
I'd just like, excuse me, I'd like to ask, Kim, sometime, could you have Mary Visick come and talk to us about probation? I think Louise brought up a good point. I'm not sure what the folks exactly was of his question, but I think it'd be helpful to have Mary just tell us about her work. Could that, could we do that? Does that make sense?
One thing about probation in this state is that probation is a state agency, not a county agency, so they are operated totally by the state.
Right.
I'm sure if the commissioners reached out to State Probation and requested a presentation, that they'd be willing to consider it and do it, but it probably needs to come from the commissioners, being it's not a county.
That's why I said, "Ask." Ask.
We can ask.
Good deal. Thank you. Will you do that for me? Thanks. Code approach too, that's good.
Okay. Hoping that that completes a good and important discussion, but we will move on now. And we're going to come back to the CARES Act update. We have a couple of items under here for our consideration. The, as Joe was coming up, the first item for consideration is approval to allocate $26,457,245.68 of CARES Act funds to Douglas County General Fund for payroll expenses, representing the payroll expense for March, April, and May for the seven county departments, the Health Department, the Health Center, Community Mental Health Center, Sheriff Corrections, Youth Center, and Community Services. Joe, anything?
Yes, this first one is consistent with the approach that the state of Nebraska is taking for all local governments, in that they're allowing departments that are under the umbrella of public health and public safety to use the presumption that all departmental expenses within those groups will be deemed to be substantially dedicated to COVID, and thus eligible for CARES Act reimbursement. And this presumption clause has also been approved in the guidelines put out by the Treasury Department. So what we're doing here is basically taking those three months of payroll for those seven departments in public health and public safety, which, based on the Oracle Payroll Report, I had run, it was about twenty-seven, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-six and a half million dollars, in saying that those are CARES Act eligible expenses. And as such, we will claim them, and then effectively take that $26 million and move that amount over into the county's general fund, where then the commissioners can decide how, what's the most appropriate way to allocate or spend that money.
Thank you. When we changed a little bit how we were pursuing things for Omaha's benefit, to help them get up to the required reimbursable expenses, we said if we take, as the state is doing, three months of public safety salaries, it will impact the county as well, and now we're seeing the impact. So we're.
Yes, this is consistent with what we're doing for the city, and what we are working with, with all the local governments within Douglas County, and how the state is treating all the local governments within the state. So this is just very consistent for every local government in Nebraska.
Thank you, Joe. Questions or comments to what's going on here? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Joe, when you use the word presumption for the rationale to take twenty-six and a half million dollars for personnel costs, what is the presumption? What are we presuming?
We are presuming that all the expenses, payroll expenses, so all the, we're presuming that all the personnel in this, in these departments are considered substantially dedicated to dealing with the pandemic, and as such, their payroll is eligible for use against our CARES Act award.
Okay. So this kind of goes to the overarching, what you're dealing with was impacted by the COVID pandemic.
Also, for all public health and public safety payroll, yes.
Right, right. So we could use the same rationale if we entertained a question of hazardous duty pay for individuals who are directly involved with treating people or coming in contact with infected people? That presumption?
No, because hazardous duty is considered, this is just for budgeted payroll, so the, this is just for their regular hours, where I think, and maybe Patrick will come up, that the hazard pay is a little more complex, and I'll let Patrick speak to that, since he's been researching it.
So there's different requirements under the CARES Act for how you deal with hazard pay. You have to show that it is.
Mr. Bloomingdale, could you state your name?
Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator. So with the hazard pay, you have to show that indeed there's, that they are directly dealing with the pandemic, and it is truly a hazardous situation versus this presumption. This is strictly a presumption. There is no presumption regarding hazard pay. This presumption is specific to the payroll for public health and public safety. That's the only presumption that's included in the CARES Act, so we cannot apply that. Hazard pay is an entirely different conversation. That is a conversation that we've had in executive session, that we'll continue to have in executive session as it relates to the unions and hazard pay. But yeah, there are two apples and oranges.
Okay. So I'm just trying to get to this presumption's definition, and if I understand Joe's explanation is, it's presumed that these people, Health Department, Health Center, sheriffs, corrections, community services, and others, were impacted by the COVID pandemic. That's the presumption that we just talked about.
And the reason, my speculation is that the reason they did that in the CARES Act is because they didn't want to go through the complex calculation of, you know, you take your law enforcement or public safety, and how much of that, specifically how many hours for each employee, and have to go through that complicated calculation, they create this specific, just, it's just a blanket presumption. Whether or not all of your law enforcement were actually, or public safety, or public health were actually engaged in COVID-related activities, there's just going to be that blanket presumption. There is no blanket presumption on anything else.
Okay. So the twenty-six and a half million dollars that we're talking about is for the entire payroll for this entire period of, is it April till, what's the end?
May. March, April, May.
It's the entire payroll for those seven departments for the period, March 1st through May 31st, for those three months.
Okay.
Yes.
And is there going to be an additional presumption relative to this same matter for the balance of the year?
Under the federal guidelines, the people who receive the money, namely the county, we would have the ability, if the commissioners so deem, to use ten months of payroll for these departments. So the period, March 1st to December 30th, that we can use the same presumption for that entire ten-month period. And that decision is up to the commissioners, and has to be specifically authorized by Commissioner Duda, who is considered the executive in charge, which is a very specific CARES Act requirement.
Okay. So it's a separate question. We're entertaining March 1st to May 31st, total payroll for these departments now?
Yes, which is what the state, we're just filing everybody in the state now. But as we have our own CARES Act money, we have the ability to deem all ten months eligible, which does have the benefit, is that that's considered an eligible expense and very clear-cut. And so there's a potential there to potentially take seventy-five to eighty million dollars and presume it through payroll, and that seventy-five to eighty million dollars would then be, the risk of clawback would be almost nil, and we could subtract that from the hundred and sixty-six, so it's like half the CARES Act money we received, and we could just classify that and bring that over, and with those funds, the commissioners could deem it, spend it as they deem appropriate without being under the restrictions of the CARES Act.
Just so I understand, Joe, that would be seventy-five or eighty million dollars total, including this twenty-six, or an addition?
Yeah.
Including this twenty-six?
Yes. So that's what about ten months of payroll would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Commissioner Boyle.
I spoke to Joe earlier in the week about a request that I received from Congressman Bacon's office about providing refrigerated services to shipments of fresh meat and dairy products by the Department of Agriculture. And they asked me if I could, why they called me, I guess I'm just lucky. But anyway, so I have worked with them in the past. I was working with them on a, on a property owner, a business owner who needed help with Congress, and I'd called their office. I think that's why my name was on their dial list. In any event, they asked if we could, we could come up with that, and it is, would be something that would be covered. And I'm frankly having difficulty. I talked to Omaha Steaks, they don't have any extra service, and I talked to the food bank, they've got some trucks parked on their property now. And so what I do need some help with is finding these services for the food bank to keep those products there, right there in their adjacent to their offices, so they can distribute them from there. So if anybody has any ideas, I'd sure appreciate knowing about them. Maybe it's something that someone else ought to be doing, but if someone else wants to take the lead, that's fine with me. So that's kind of what's going on. And Joe did say it would be, it would be a covered.
I think being eligible expense, yes.
Thank you. Although I'd like to bring the conversation back to the twenty-six and a half million dollars that the county is considering.
I think that's what it was, because that's where the money would come from, I think.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Is there a motion? Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second? A motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan, to approve item A1. Questions or comments to the motion? Mr. Clerk, could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
Item two, I don't think Joe's going far yet. Discussion slash action regarding the administrative resources needed to continue the rental assistance program for the remainder of the calendar year.
Commissioner, what I'm going to recommend in looking at this, if you look at point B, where we have, Melissa's going to give a rental assistance program update, I would suggest she come and start talking about that update, because this number two is going to be, blend right into that, in that this is specifically dealing with what, how we want to handle the rental assistance program for the remainder of the calendar year.
Fine. Okay. Then we will move briefly to item B, the CARES Rental Assistance Program Update. And Melissa Seawick, our General Assistance Administrator, welcome back, Melissa.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melissa Seawick, Director of General Assistance.
Good morning, Melissa. Make sure you pull that mic right down to your mouse, so everybody hears you as clearly as we can. Thank you.
Okay, just to recap on the program, we have the CARES Rental Assistance Program that is able to assist low-to-moderate income eligible county residents with unpaid rent due to a COVID-19-related hardship, and the maximum benefit for rental assistance is $7,000 per household. We are at the two-month point with this program. It seems like a lot longer than that. But, so just kind of a two-month review, we have served over 1,100 adults and 1,300 children. With this rental assistance program, we have paid out more than $1.6 million in rental assistance, and that totals up to a little over $3,500 monthly payments, rent payments that have gone into the community. We have averaged about 115 households being approved each week, and averaging about $205,000 in rental payments each week. Again, that's the average. Obviously, the further we've gotten out, the more efficient we've become, and we're able to get the money out fairly quickly. The overall updates for the program, just over 3,500 valid applications were received, over 2,900 landlords have completed their portion of the application. We've processed over 2,000 applications, and 841 of those applications that are in progress are currently being worked on. We have 690 applications that we're awaiting response from the landlord, and that's about 19% of the applications we have received. So that's gone down pretty much each week, which is great. The monthly rent requests have ranged from $25 to $2,600. As far as approvals, we've approved 927 applications, totaling just over $1.6 million. Approval amounts have ranged from $25 to $7,000. The average assistance approved per household. Approval amounts have ranged from $25 to $7,000. The average assistance approved per household is over, a little over $2,300. As far as denials goes, we have had, 1,110 applications have been denied. Majority of those were for insufficient documentation and were unable to verify financial hardship. Again, typically when we're looking at a blanket statement of unable to verify a financial hardship due to COVID-19, that's where we've received all of the information, but we are not able to point to a loss of income, a loss of wages due to that COVID-19. So pretty much when those situations, no matter how many times those folks would apply, they would still have that same outcome. And then the next slide is the application zip codes. So these are the applications that we have processed or that are in process. I've highlighted the areas that we've received the most applications. That's 68104, 68111, and 68134. And that's pretty consistent with our general assistance program as well. And then this last slide, I'm not going to go through all of them, but I just wanted to share with you some of the feedback that we've gotten. These are direct quotes from people that have received assistance, just kind of thanking the commissioners for allocating that $10 million to go into the community. So it'd be some reading for you guys to do, but overall, it's just thanks for stopping a lot of evictions, keeping a lot of households or families in their house during this time of need. And then again, for any additional information, we have our website, it's douglascounty-ne.gov, where you can apply. And then we also have the hotline, 402-444-7232. We have opened up the applications for October through December. So we have people that are applying all the way through the end of the year, and we are issuing those payments as of now. And then we also have anybody that was previously approved assistance on the program. We have sent all of them an email with the next steps, how to request assistance. They don't have to fill out an additional application. They just go in and request those additional months if they are still in need. I actually had a gentleman that turned me down for money, which I was surprised, but he has since got a job, and he didn't want any additional assistance, which I was surprised by. But I definitely respect that, so.
Interesting. Good for him.
And then, so the second part of that is, we're requesting additional funds, the funding that we had through Deloitte to have them assist with reviewing our applications. That will go throughout the rest of this week. And then we are looking at assistance through the end of December. So it was, I believe, $276,000. Will get us through December, wrapping up the program. Initially, when we started this program, the estimate, we figured the money would be gone based on what was being said as far as the rental need in the community. Obviously, the funding is not gone, but the needs, as far as the number of applications we're getting in, we don't need as many staff. And we have gradually, probably every couple weeks, we have decreased the staff that we have through Deloitte to have the money last until the end of this week. So that will for sure get us through the remainder of the year.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Congratulations on the great job you're doing. And I like these reports, they're really concise and to the point. Thanks, Melissa. I wanted to ask if some of these folks have been turned down, we now have more applications than, I guess we've got a thousand that are being turned down or so. Is there, I know that it's a paper problem, you know, not getting the verification and so forth, and you can't do anything about that. Is there anything that, you know, OTAC could do to help you with that, do you think? I mean, I, you know, they have money that is unrestricted, that they can get through their churches and so forth, people that are really desperate. And I read these thanks and gratitude, which are really wonderful to see. Thanks for putting those in. But that's exactly who we're trying to help. There's a lot, it looks like a lot of single women here with children and so forth that are really, really desperate. And we've, you've done a great job filling their need. OTAC or some of these Catholic parishes or Lutheran parishes and Episcopal and so forth have cash that they are willing to give. Maybe we could see if they would be willing to have us send referrals to them or something, if you're comfortable with that. If you're not, I don't know if there's some problem with that. But maybe some other way to help people who otherwise can't get help from us because of the paperwork that we have. Just a suggestion. But again, congratulations on doing a terrific job with what you've got. That's great. Did a great job. And I'd like to, I guess finally ask if, maybe there's something Leah could do to send out an email blast to the community with information that might be of some use?
Yeah, and she's been posting on social media, and we've been sharing, and she emailed me a couple hours ago, and her and I are going to meet this afternoon to see what we can get out there and continue to push the message. And we continue to work with and share the word with other nonprofits and different organizations.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We continue to talk to different nonprofits and different organizations to share the information on the rental assistance program, to get the word out, but then also to better partner with them and who has the funding, you know, specifically if there's something that we can't do to assist. But yeah, we continue to do that.
Thanks a lot, Melissa.
Commissioner Morgan?
Melissa, every time you come here, we're always thanking you for your work and your staff and how they respond to the hundreds, I guess, over 100 calls a day. Just wanted to be sure, I know I've had some and talked to you about some of the landlords charging the late fees and knowing they're going to get paid, still wanting to do an eviction. You know, there's a part of me that maybe isn't being fair, but it's almost like you'd like to name some of those landlords that are doing that, because they know they're going to get the money. And it's a matter of just waiting a certain number of days because the county's going to reimburse this citizen. And I'm really hoping that you're having better success with the landlords and letting them know some of the commissioners would like to almost state the name of these people that don't want to be patient, knowing they're going to get the money. And as I said, maybe I'm being a little unfair. But if it was me, I'd want you to call me and say, do you know what you're doing here?
For the most part, we have, we haven't had that, we haven't had that issue, have we? Yes. But I also think with opening up through December, we're going to prevent a lot of that, because these folks are going to be paid in advance. And we have talked to the tenants that have ran into this issue, and we have referred them to legal aid. We have also referred them to looking at the CDC's moratorium. So we're trying to advocate for them. Those landlords, they are there. It's disappointing, but they are few and far between, thankfully.
Yeah. And if I can ever call any to help you, I'm glad to give them a call. And I mean that. If one of your people, not necessarily you at all, but if one of your people calls me and says, here's a landlord that wants to evict a person anyway, because they don't want to wait the 20 days or whatever to get the money, knowing it's coming, for sure, I'll be happy to make some calls. And I just want you to know that.
I'll slip a note under your door.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And you say, I mean, the item that we'll be coming back to in a moment is whether or not to contract with Deloitte for another $276,000 worth of support services for the rental assistance program.
Correct.
You made the comment, it's more right-sized now, you think? I mean, as we've gone along and gotten a little bit of a feel for what the demands and needs are, you think we're at about the right size of a call center?
Yeah. So what we've done is we've, Eric and I, he's not my main point of contact, we have looked at the needs and what applications are coming in as far as new applications each week. We've been monitoring them. So we are really confident that this funding will get us through the remainder of the year with the staffing that we need between the staff that I have in my department and then also with the Deloitte's review team. So, and again, we've gradually decreased staff as there's been less and less applications coming in. When we initially started, we had over 20 reviewers that were assisting us. And this is going to take us down to, next week, four reviewers, four level-one reviewers, one level-two. And Eric and Kathy with Deloitte team, and then we have our staff that are working, pretty much Tiffany and I are working full-time on this, the CARES program.
Thank you, Melissa. And I know you're working full-time. I keep sending you emails of everybody that has trouble, even people outside of Douglas County. And you have very professionally helped every person that I have sent your way. And so I know you're working quite full-time. Commissioner Morgan?
Eric, maybe I didn't hear it right. Are we paying Deloitte $276,000 to review more of these rentals?
Yes, that's what we'll be considering here in a few minutes.
What I'm, it just, and Joe, I know you do a great job with this. But I'm curious if the rental assistance, it seems like that meets all the qualifications, because we've seen the others approved, and we're going through a good process with Melissa. It seems like we wouldn't need Deloitte to tell us. I guess I'd be willing, almost for that quarter of a million dollars, to take our chances. But I always listen to you, Joe, on this and Melissa.
So Deloitte has been with us hand in hand this entire time. So they have specific staff that are level-one reviewers and level...
No, I feel like I'm not here.
Yeah.
Deloitte staff, can you hear? Okay, Deloitte staff, we've worked with them, and we have level-one reviewers and then level-two reviewers who have been reviewing our applications from the start. And then once they complete those reviews, that's when they come to our offices, and then we give the final approval. Right now, we have Tiffany on our team, who's working as a full-time level-two reviewer as well. So this has been the process where they've kind of been doing those initial approvals of all of those applications. And our hopes are that we can keep them on board to do those, the remaining applications that we're getting in through the remainder of the year, and then process the ones that we have in process right now.
Does that charge seem, I mean, you know, it seems like you could hire a good number of people for that amount of money, especially for the short period that they're doing this. It just seems like a lot for reviewing, but maybe that's just me. What do you think about it?
I, I think that it's, what we've looked at all along is it's not just the money that's spent. We have also looked at the quality. They know exactly what they're looking for, how to process it. We also have to look at equipment and office space and all of this stuff to have people, to bring people on board. And when we initially started, this is kind of the route we went. So to think about now readjusting it and try to find different people to help review those, because our offices, our office cannot take on all of these applications with what we're doing right now, kind of gives me anxiety to think about bringing on somebody, a new team to work with this. Is it a lot of money? I think that when you look at what we're going to end up spending by the end of the year on rent, you know, I think it's worth the Deloitte team, knowing it's done accurately, and it's done timely. You know, we're getting some of these processes, these applications processed in 24, 48 hours. So I would prefer we continue to work with them, but...
Okay. It's good enough for me. Supportive of what you're doing exactly.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
So, Melissa, if I understand this, and thanks for the report, 1.6 million of the 10 million has been paid to people for rent assistance?
Correct.
And that's going out at about $205,000 a week?
That was, that's average, which I, like I said in the beginning, I don't think that's an accurate gauge, because in the beginning, obviously, it was slower coming out. Just yesterday alone, we almost put out $200,000.
So we've got 12 weeks left in the year when all of this needs to be expended. If you did 12 times 205, that's 2.4 million. To the 1.6 million would be a total of $4 million of the $10 million appropriated for this. Is there a plan to ramp up the disbursements so that we get the entire 10 million to people by the end of the year?
I am open to ideas on how to do that. I truly believe we are doing everything we can to get the word out and to share the program. Like I've stated a couple, in a couple meetings, when you look at our economy compared to other cities, you know, we have between one and, we're, I think, number one, number two as far as unemployment, the lowest unemployment rate. Like I said, I was turned down when I was trying to help a guy out with further assistance.
I understand. I just was wondering if you had a plan. We can talk some more about that. So how much have we paid Deloitte so far to get the 1.6 million dollars out to people?
Our original contract, I believe, was for $510,000.
Say again?
Our, the original contract or agreement was for $510,000, which we will use up at the end of this week.
I'm not hearing a dollar amount.
$510,000, and it will be used up at the end of this week. And that was the original agreement.
Okay. And the request is for an additional 510?
No, it is for $276,000 to get us through the remainder of the year.
Okay, so the request is on top of the 510, 276,000?
Yeah, 276,750.
276? Okay. So that would be $750,000 basically for the Deloitte payment for the entire year. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be based on our current progress for an expenditure of $4 million?
As I stated, that 200, the average weekly, what we're spending out is just divided, what we've spent divided by the number of weeks we've been active.
Right.
Yesterday, we spent almost $200,000 in rental payments that went out. So I...
Okay. I'm just trying to get a benchmark of where we're at with our payments going out, $1.6 million. Payments to Deloitte, half a million dollars on that, seems a little rich. And then going forward, we're going to have to get the balance of the 8 million plus out, and they're asking for another $276,000 to do that. So I guess, you know, we're in a bit of a pickle here, because it doesn't seem to be on track to get $10 million out to people for rent assistance based on our progress so far. But we're running up to significant administrative costs, you know, compared to what? Compared to the $20 million that we've entrusted to the Omaha Community Foundation, which is a fraction administratively of this three-quarters of a million that we're talking about to Deloitte for half of the sum. It's a little concerning to me, and this is ongoing, over and above the original $300,000 that the Deloitte contract was for, that we're looking at getting much more to the folks at Deloitte than we're actually getting to the people on the receiving end here in Omaha for these assistance programs. So I guess we'll have to talk about this, because time is of the essence here. We have 12 weeks to spend 8 million plus in rent assistance. And we're not making progress at that clip. We're making progress at a $205,000 a week clip. So I don't know why it's slower than it should be. I don't know why. And maybe we need to tweak this again, as we have in the past, relative to the dollar amounts of people that would be qualifying. Maybe we need to drill down on some of these people who are being denied and see if there's a common denominator for the denials that we need to adjust, because we're not going to get $10 million to rent assistance needing people at this rate by December 31st. But we sure will probably pay Deloitte three-quarters of a million dollars for not getting us there.
Commissioner Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator, a couple of items. Keep in mind that $10 million number is really an arbitrary number that we set up with the hopes that we could get that spent. So it's not like we have to get to $10 million. We would love to get as much as we can out, obviously, but we have to have a process to do that. So we're on the hook for any money that's misspent. The county board would have to repay that money. So there has to be a process that we go through. Deloitte, you look at Omaha Community Foundation, they charge about 3% administrative fee for what they're doing with the money that they've received. If you look at the total amount Deloitte's got for all of the consulting services, comes out to about 1% of the $166 million that we've received from the federal government. And this is, we're not doing anything different than cities and states around the country have done, and using consultants, because they are not equipped and we are not equipped to do this ourselves. Deloitte has provided incredible consulting services to us that we were not in a position to be able to do ourselves. And it's not just rental assistance, it's, it's all of the money for all of the items and the jurisdictions and the nonprofits, the consulting, the guidance, the advice, that we were not in a position to do ourselves. So I just think that there's been a little bit of an unfair attack on our consultant, and they have done an incredible job. And I can't thank them enough for really saving us and helping us do this as smoothly as it is gone. It's really, to me... as it's, as it has gone. It's really, to me, done incredibly well overall.
Well, Patrick, I appreciate that. We don't agree. In this particular program, we have expended $1.6 million to renters in need and we have paid Deloitte, what?
$786,000.
$510,000.
$510,000. That's 25%, not 2% on the rent assistance program, the one program going directly to people. If you spread it out to the programs that we've given to, you know, larger entities, ourselves and the government, the, the administrative fees are way down. It's enormous on this. It's 25% on this and it's going up.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I believe with the additional money that we're going to be kicking into Deloitte to be handling this money, it's going to be $786,000, which is on paying out 1.6 million. It says 50 cents expense for every dollar, not counting what we're spending in overhead, which we don't ever, we don't ever account for. But that's why I was, I was opposed to hiring them for, for doing this particular thing. I, it's bad enough that we had to hire them for what you say and they may be doing a really terrific job to save ourselves from ourselves when it comes time to be audited. I, I don't dispute that at all, but it's an expensive, we're paying, we're really spending a lot of money. And I, I frankly think maybe what we ought to do is run the risk, maybe run the risk of allocating this money to the people who are not able to get their landlords to cooperate and go ahead and give out the, the money that they need, which isn't going to be very much. And then, that'll be in our, instead of paying it to Deloitte, another couple hundred thousand dollars to make sure we do everything right, which they're also getting paid to audit on the other end, which I think is really, well, I don't want to say unethical, but it's unusual.
They're not auditing. They're not auditing.
They're not going to audit our, they're not auditing?
No. The, the Treasury audits us, not Deloitte.
No, but I mean, Deloitte is the one who tells us the spending is correct.
They provide us advice and guidance before the money is spent, but they do not audit after the money is spent.
What are they being paid for that, Patrick?
The advice and the guidance that we receive, the total amount has been about, what, what did you say, a little over 1 million, Joe? For the total, for everything. That includes, right.
Okay. Well, lots of numbers are being thrown around. Deloitte's being paid handsomely for auditing, making sure that we spend the money properly. They're protecting us. It's an insurance policy is what it is. And I, that's fine that we have it. I don't, I don't knock anybody for having that. But I think Mr. Kavanaugh's point is well taken. We're not going to reach, you know, when we were first told about this rental assistance, we were told the problem was $32 million. Do you remember that from OTAC?
From OTAC.
Yeah, from OTAC. And they're the ones who are in the community all the time. They ought to know. But anyway, so apparently they didn't. But, so we're, I really think we ought to think about this and maybe what we should do is change this, change that part of it. Deloitte is going to protect us from spending the money, but I think we ought to maybe consider not using them for any more of this expensive clearance. Maybe what we should do is, we should give people the money that they need with some reasonable assurances. And if we have to pay it, the most is going to be is half a million dollars. So, we're going to be paying Deloitte 786 before it's over just for that service. So, anyway, that's not going to go. I know no one will want to take the risk, but I do. I think it's more important to give people, people in the community money than it is to pay some company in Delaware. The other thing is that frankly, I, I would like to see us maybe consider looking at some of the nonprofits to help us with this. I mean, they know who these players are, as I said a couple of months ago. So, anyway, I'll, I'll quit talking because I know no one's going to go along with that. But I think we're wasting money and we should be giving it to people, not to corporations.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair.
I think, Commissioner Boyle, your main point that needs to be stressed is we received a figure from OTAC, from the community, of $38 million of rent burdened individuals within our county. The problem with that is it's not COVID-related. And that's where everybody lost that piece of it when we were actually setting up this program.
I wasn't saying that was exposure. I was just saying that was one of the figures that was thrown out. I'm not saying that's our, that's the need. I'm not saying that.
But no, I'm saying that's what everybody thought. Because everybody thought $38 million because I remember when I suggested the 10, there was a comment about raising it to 20. And I said, no, let's wait to see how this goes. And again, it's because it has to be COVID-related. That's the big, that, you just hit what the issue is. It isn't about our progress. It isn't about a terrible job anybody's doing. It is about the true need and it being COVID-related. And so, I think we have to focus on that. And so, Melissa, even if we go to the end of the year and now we're going back to those individuals who were in need prior to the October through December timeframe, we're asking them if they're still in need, correct?
Yes.
And if you look at the ones that were denied, they're being denied because there's insufficient documentation and/or unable to verify financial hardship due to COVID. And then, there's others who are unable to verify financial hardship due to COVID. So, insufficient and unable. So, that's a huge point in all of this process we have or where the money goes. So, I am not in favor of changing anything at this point because as Melissa said, as we've gone along, we have actually become more efficient. Our process is good. We have good eyes on everything. And I, for one, don't want the Treasury coming back in and auditing us and finding that we did not follow the correct rules and have to give or get penalized for it. So, again, I think our process has proven itself. We are getting the money to those in need. All of us have gotten calls. All of us have talked to our General Assistance Director who has handled those calls. And I give tremendous kudos to what we're doing because we are addressing and taking care of the need that's been based on rent burdened folks due to COVID-related factors. So, I'm, I don't want to change anything. The one thing I would ask, because I have received calls from landlords, because they're, they are in a pickle, really. You know, there's a federal moratorium now on the evictions. And they still have bills that need to be paid. They still have to pay, and I'm using their words I got in conversations, you know, they still have to pay their property taxes, you know, and, and all of that. So, is, Melissa, is there, I know we've reached out to landlords, but is there a landlord group that we can go back to, to have a conversation with to say, if you are in a position where you could potentially evict somebody, but you can't because of this moratorium, do you know about this program?
Yeah, we have, and it's been in their newsletter, the Nebraska Landlord Association and then, and the, we have had it in the Nebraska Landlord Association newsletter. It's also been a part of, I don't remember, recall the, the correct name, but it's about the apartments and the property managers. So, we've talked to them and every landlord we talk to, we tell them the same thing. If you have anybody else, send them our way first. So, we've talked to a ton of landlords and a lot of land, if you look at our list, a lot of them are repeat landlords that have been affected or have had their tenants affected. So, and we will continue to do that. And we've let them know about the $7,000, the max, the increase with that. And we have let them know with every other update and then that now we're paying up until December. So, we've had communication with them throughout this process.
Perfect. Thank you.
It seems to me that this board has a very high expectation of the level of service. We want you and your department to be administering this program. But if Joe Smith or Jane Smith comes forward to you and says, I think I need rental assistance, we want somebody in your office to virtually take them by the hand and lead them through the process. And if there is any way in the world that they qualify, we want to make sure they get that check. We have a high expectation of the level of service that we want you and your department to get. We just want to pay for it.
Chair, I've got one other comment I want to make. I know that annoys you, but...
Commissioner Boyle.
Sorry about that.
I have no problem with what you're doing, Melissa. You know, I dealt with you before all this even took place and I know the quality of your work and your staff. Please, don't misunderstand what Mr. Duda said as any criticism from me because it's not. I want to ask about in your sheet here on, it's not marked, but it's on the front page, lower right-hand corner. It says there are 690 applications are awaiting response from the landlords. That's almost 20%. Now, you know, we should do something with trying to help them. And I did give you the name of Gene Echol, who's an attorney who represents landlords. And I make a confession, which I haven't made in public for this date, but I am a former attorney for landlords, okay? I did evictions by the handfuls, okay? I even represented the Sisters of Mercy when they evicted people. You can imagine that. Sisters of Mercy versus Joe Doe. Anyway. So, anyway, the point is that Gene Echol is a really fine young man. He contacted me. He represents, and I know that I gave the name to you, and he's willing to try to goose these landlords along and help in any way that he can so that the, the ultimate beneficiary is the landlord and the tenant. And I don't, I really feel for the landlords. They've got, I know mom and pop operations that are really in trouble because they're still paying mortgages on some of these homes. They've converted or whatever on 33rd Street and so forth. They're just in trouble. So, we need to help the landlords and the, the tenants. But something like that, I think Gene would, would be glad to try to help you with. And I've got his phone number right here in front of me. I'd be glad to give it to you again. You know, I just think he's, we ought to try it. And I'm not saying let's get indicted or anything else or do something screwy, but it's awfully expensive. You start looking at the cost effectiveness, and I think Commissioner Morgan referred to it. It, I'm not sure it's cost effective, but we're in it. So, let's finish it.
Thank you. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board? Well, we're, we're taking item A. We, we put B ahead for discussion purposes of item A2, discussion slash action regarding the administrative resources needed to continue the rental assistance program for the remainder of the calendar year.
Mr. Joe?
I'm asking for a motion.
I'm going to make a motion if you'd like.
Okay. Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Right. Commissioner Boyle brought up some good points and I, I would say that we should move to amend our criteria so that we can get the, the money out to the people that need it at a greater rate. Because obviously, at this point, we're spending 25% of the money on Deloitte and we're not going to reach the vast majority of the $10 million that we've allocated for the people. So, rather than throw more money at Deloitte for a program that's obviously bogged down and not moving as fast as it should to get to where it needs to be by the end of the year, I would recommend that we take note of what Commissioner Boyle has, has noted in terms of adjusting our criteria so that we can allow more people to qualify.
All right. Thank you. But that's, that's not on the agenda. It's, we've got a motion on the floor.
Commissioners, just for clarification, for Commissioner Boyle, you asked the question. The motion is to approve the resolution that's before you to pay at Deloitte and Atish LOP, the 276,750 to complete through the end of the year, the rental assistance program.
For clarification, the, the item that I have on Roman numeral 5A2 is Deloitte for $510,000 and you're saying 276,000?
There is no 510,000. I don't, I don't know what you're looking at.
276,750 is the figure we're considering.
That's the resolution that's attached to that item.
Okay. So, the 510, it says approved work order with Deloitte for 510, which expires on, on 10. They've received 510. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay. So, this is 276?
We've authorized payment of that. So, that comes into invoices. So, this payment of 276,750 would only be actually paid when invoices are submitted, which will come back to the board for approval at later date, when those invoices. So, this is exactly what we did with the 510,000. We're authorizing that expenditure, but it, the resolution says upon submission of the appropriate invoice. So, when those invoices are submitted for the, to, to total the 276,750, those will be presented to this board like all other invoices are submitted for approval.
Well, I'd say that we lay this over. I mean, we're rushing to pay Deloitte and we're not paying people's rent. We're paying Deloitte for not getting us what we need, which is to pay people's rent. And now, we'll be at three quarters of a million dollars on a 1.6 million payout. That's an enormous administrative fee. Again, I would point to the miniscule administrative fee charged by the Omaha Community Foundation on $20 million, a smaller number than what we're talking about here for $1.6 million and it's three quarters of a million now. That's outrageous.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
I've listened to what you've said, Melissa, most importantly. Patrick, thank you. I would make the motion that we go ahead and approve this and move forward and don't waste time. I hear the numbers of the people where it has been denied. If we didn't do that, Patrick, and you can correct me, we might get in serious problems. So, it has to be COVID-related. I have great confidence in Melissa and her staff. That's my motion. Let's get on with it.
Actually, we already have a motion on the floor to that effect. So, thank you.
Perfect.
Okay.
Call for the vote.
Sounds good.
We have a motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Duda.
By me.
All right.
For the approval of 276,750.
Motion passes 4 to 2. Commissioners Kavanaugh and Boyle voting no. All other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. I believe that's the last action item that we had. I, well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. However, the very last one is Commissioner Borgeson's. And I apologize. We will get to that. We have not done citizen comments yet. As I have juggled things around trying to accommodate the people that are here, I just want to make sure if anybody would like to address this board on anything not on the agenda, this is the appropriate time to do so.
I'm not presenting all that to you. But my name is Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette, Omaha, Nebraska. That's just a sample of some of the board meeting minutes and agendas and things that I've read and kept and reread over the years for about two years. And I've attempted to go before you and the city council also and talk about rules. That's not to be the case, I guess. But I want to go back to about September 29th of 2020, an article in the Omaha World-Herald.
That's today, isn't it?
Has to do with Open Meetings Act and citizens' comments maybe being removed from this body, as it was attempted in other bodies. And I want to remind you that you, first of all, whatever body that is, you do have precedence in the U.S. Constitution, First Amendment. So, any way, shape or form that you try to limit people petitioning their government, if you read, if you read Amendment 1, which I will not do for you, I think you're intelligent enough, restricting that time and trying to take it out of the citizens' your paid-for meetings, public meetings supposedly, is absolutely unconstitutional. So, why continue being unconstitutional? Do citizens have to take you to court? I guess I'll have to ask the Attorney General, just what is the actual intent of the Open Meetings Act? You're being advised, according to that article, by your attorney, I don't know, maybe that young lady, to not respond to us, but you can respond to everybody else? I think that's somewhat unconstitutional. Excuse me one second. Okay. I stand here today on both legs, not on a knee, to support Don Klein, Omaha Police Department, Omaha Fire Department and School Resources. Omaha Fire Department, and school resource officers. Once again, I think those are some issues that are somewhat unconstitutional, people trying to remove school resource officers and defund police. I don't think it's constitutional for this body to be entertaining, yet people like me come to it, microphone, and I'm called, I think it was last week, ignorant. My statements are ignorant. Take that home, read it, ladies and gentlemen. Over two years ago, there were a lot of ignorant statements, apparently, according to the World-Herald and Mr. Doug Kagan. And Mr. Doug Kagan has his own statements about your body, so-called issue points that maybe he discussed with you privately. I don't know, but it's out in the public. He likes to be civil. He thinks a lot of us citizens were uncivil, according to the World-Herald. Maybe he should be asked. But he does seem to get favored when he does come here and sit over there, and then he goes home or out in the hallway and interviews with the World-Herald and chimes in with the people that are saying people like me are making wild and crazy statements. It's right there in print, but it's also on videotapes. One more second here. I wonder if Mr. Boyle would like to retract statements about the Civil War statement I made, that we will not have discussions or anybody's mentioning that or bringing that up? At the point that he did that, he was breaking a rule. They're not to talk to us, but he broke the rule by telling me I'm out of order or something, by talking about Civil War. But if you read the headlines and if you go on a website and look at the news, you can't say that we're not. It's not a shooting war yet. So maybe he'd like to retract that. I think I'll end up with also that.
I'm going to ask you to wrap your comments up.
I played football in high school, and I was not fast enough or good enough to have tackled Gail Sayers. He was too good for me. But I also think that in the resolutions that should be brought up, I would like to hear a resolution for Jake Gardner also.
I'm going to call time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address this group during citizen comments on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay. The last item that we have on our agenda for our consideration under Human Resources is approval of unemployment fair chance policy in practice coming from Commissioner Borgeson. I turn the floor to you, Mary Ann.
Okay, okay there. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is brought back with the changes from our discussion last week. It will, if passed today, we will, Karen Bush, our HR director, will work with civil service to write up a policy, and that'll be brought back to this board for, also for consideration. So I would make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Rogers. Questions or comments? We did have good discussion on this earlier. I will go ahead and call for the vote, please.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. This brings us to the end of the public portion of our building, our meeting. We do have need for exec session. There were three reasons. One is negotiations, one's legal advice, and I forgot the third reason. Litigation, always litigation. We must be suing somebody again. So I would entertain, and today, for Zoom purposes, we were told that 903 is actually a little bit better, like for accommodating Mark Crabb. So we're going to, exec session will be in room 903 today, and I would entertain a motion to, for negotiations, legal advice, and litigation. Yes. Oh, I'll second your motion. Mary Ann, I am so sorry. She sent me a note at the beginning saying, can I have a moment of personal privilege before we adjourn? Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to publicly make a comment. I am actually just sick to my stomach over what the state Democratic Party is doing to Mr. Don Klein. I'm sick of really what's happening around our country and our nation today with the attacks that continue to go on. But I felt like I needed to make a public statement in that I've worked with Don for many years. He is a person of integrity and honesty, and he is a true statesman. He's actually the hardest-working county attorney that I know, and I know quite a few, not only locally but statewide and nationally, and he, as Don Klein, is respected locally and statewide and nationally. Folks can disagree with the decision that he made on the Skirlock Gardner case. That's not what I'm talking about today. But to say, and especially a party that he's affiliated with, that he is perpetuating white supremacy is absolutely absurd and just wrong. We need to find a way to come together. We need to help each other heal from what has happened within our own community as well as our country. And we need to unite as a community, and this board can show the leadership, can step up and do that. I will be asking that a resolution be drafted representing our support of Mr. Klein. And again, I want to preface this by saying this has not, this is not, folks can disagree with the decision he made. This is the statement that was made, that he's perpetuating white supremacy, and that is wrong. That is not who Don Klein is. We all know that because we've worked with him for so many years. But my bottom line is to, is a plea, to please, as a community, let us come together. Let us help heal each other and move forward in a way more positive way than what has been being demonstrated these last few months. Thank you.
Thank you. That has prompted a couple more comments. Commissioner Morgan.
Real quick, thank you, Mary Ann, very much. And yesterday, I did call Chris Baker at KFAB and told the station of my support and that they could call me in support of Don Klein totally. He is one of the best ever county attorneys and tries to really do the right thing always. So you've summed it up very well, and I look forward to your resolution, and I'm glad to be a co-sponsor of it also.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I appreciate all the Republicans speaking on behalf of Don Klein. I think it's great. I, you know, I've thought about this too, and I'll tell you, the best way, as someone who's been through the flogging, a pretty public flogging over my lifetime, I would, I would say the best way to handle these things is to not respond.
All right. We have a motion before us to adjourn into executive session in room 903 for purposes of negotiations, legal advice, and litigation. I would call the question, please.
Motion passes six to zero.[1146.23]